I'll call to order the July 17, 2017, City Regular Council Meeting and ask those in the audience who'd like to join the council and myself in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
With that, our first item of business this evening is audience comments. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. I just point out this evening that in addition to audience comments, there are three public hearings scheduled for later in the meeting, and those are for the capital improvement plan, the annexation of the King County Island, and establishment of pre-annexation zoning, and annexation of Bellevue Utility Island, and establishment of pre-annexation zoning. So if you want to speak to one of those three, that would be the appropriate time. And just as a preview, I'm guessing that we will move pretty quickly to those three items following audience comments for those that want to speak on other issues. So anyone from the public who wishes to comment on tonight's agenda items or other topics should do so at this time. Please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. If you did not have an opportunity to include your email address on the sign-in sheet, you may leave that information on the clipboard at the front table after speaking. When recognized, please use the lectern and speak into the microphone. State your name, address, and any relationship to the city. Limit your comments to five minutes. If you have written comments, please submit them to the city clerk. There's a visual timer at the lectern. When it turns yellow, you are within the last minute of your comment period. If you use the full five minutes, the timer will sound to indicate the end of your allotted comment time. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Again, citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes these comments seriously, and we thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during our meetings. And with that, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak this evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Liz Tiedemann, and I now live in Issaquah. When I have spoken to you before, I was a Bellevue resident, and my interest in Issaquah was that my parents lived here. And I'm here today as a private citizen to give you information about two things. First, there's an event coming up at the Issaquah Public Library on July 29 at 11:30 a.m. that would be of interest to family caregivers. It is a film and a discussion, and the film is called "The Sandwich Generation." My experience from 2006, when my parents moved here until they passed away within the last couple of years, was as a member of the Sandwich Generation, being involved in bringing up my own son and helping to look out for the interests of my aging parents. And anyone who has been in that situation, well, certainly speaking from my experience, I benefit from the opportunity to have conversations with other people having the same experience. So I've been asked to be one of the panelists at the Issaquah event because I live here in Issaquah, and I have the experience. So number one is to give you information about that event, and I have a flyer from the sponsoring organization, and I've written the event details. Second, I'd like to give you the fact that on July 1, a new state law went into effect. It's RCW 18.390, and it relates to continuing care retirement communities. And there is one such entity here in Issaquah, Timber Ridge. After my parents were shopping for a place to live, and they chose to help finance and then live at Timber Ridge, during those years, we came to understand that there wasn't a lot of clarity about the difference between a continuing care retirement community and an assisted living facility. So that clarity in the senior living and services landscape starts with having a chapter of state law, 18.390, applicable to continuing care retirement communities, so they're no longer confused with assisted living facilities, which are governed by 18.20 of the Revised Code of Washington. And I have a fact sheet about continuing care retirement communities and the new law. So those are the two pieces of information I wanted to inform the city council about because they're things that interest me. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
No one further has signed up to speak?
Is there anyone else in the audience who has not signed up and desiring to speak general, under general audience comments?
My name is Ken Eastman. I reside at 2473 Northwest Stony Creek Drive in Issaquah, in the Talis Community. First off, I want to thank city council for their vote to fund the infrastructure repairs on Shangri-La Way that were impacted by the Talis hillslide. The work has started. There's construction equipment out there. There's hope in the community that we're -- this is the first step to a more permanent solution, so I want to thank the council. I want to thank city engineering for having staff out there. There's a member of Sheldon's team out there who's supervising and answering questions and looking official, so thanks for that. I am hopeful that this will spur the property owner to take care of their part of the problem, but thank you, city, for taking care of our part of it. I'd also like to express my thanks to council for the Bergsman Development Agreement decision. I think it's a wonderful piece of property that could be preserved for the public good, and I would encourage council and administration to work diligently on that. It is a unique piece of property in that it contains mature forest, but that is on flat topography at the top there, and that's somewhat unique. We have lots of forested open space, but oftentimes they're steep, and it's difficult for young families and people that are not great hikers to navigate. So that's a nice piece of land, and then it's mostly flat on the top. So thank you again.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone else who has not signed up to just?
Thank you. For the record, Justin Walsh, 2196 Shibe Bear Way, and candidate for council position three. I wanted to speak briefly on AB 7250 regarding the establishment of Transportation Benefits District. I definitely agree with the recommendation that this is needed. However, I would just urge the council as we go forward to be very wary of how we implement these new revenue models, specifically tying any new revenue to additional sales tax. This, as we all know, places a burden on those least able to afford it. Any use of sales tax to fund any transportation project should be looked at with a very critical eye. As we go forward with this, if this does go forward, I'd recommend looking closely to maybe graduated license fees with a floor or utilization of property levies, which don't have the same disproportionate impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to speak who has not signed up to speak under general comments?
My name is Mary Lynch, and I reside at 2690 Northwest Oak Crest Drive, Issaquah, Washington. I just wanted to come and reintroduce a topic that we spoke of back in November, December, and into January about mitigation fees. And I really think going forward, the city needs to take a much more serious look at mitigation fees, especially for developers, and the impact. Back then, it was identified that staff time is not covered by fully burdened cost. And in most capital projects, staff time is covered by fully burdened cost, and I really think we need to do that because at this point, we are not paying -- the developers are not paying their fair share with development. And what's been identified also is the cost of land is going up, and with some things, such as the schools, the land value or the land to build those schools are going up. And I really think we need to look at all of our mitigation fees with development and make sure that we are increasing those impact fees, and that we're also looking at other ways we can work with developers to come up with solutions. I grew up in Indiana, where developments were formed around the schools, and developers contributed a large percentage of the land for the schools. And just two weeks ago, was back in a neighborhood where this elementary was in the center of that school or of a development that was built around the elementary school. So no busing was needed, no carpooling was needed, kids could walk to school, and the developer paid for the land. And then the school system built the school on top of it. And we have that opportunity still to do that if we work with staff to get them to understand the impacts that developers have, the need to establish more public, not only schools, but other public buildings. And going forward, I would hope, especially with the central area plan, we do a much better and earlier job of engaging with the schools and the fire department and everybody in deciding what we need going forward to handle the growth that we have now and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else who has not signed up desiring to speak? Anyone else? Third and final call. And with that, audience comments are closed, and we'll now move to committee and regional reports, beginning with Mariah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On July 12, I attended the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee. No action was taken or votes taken, but several updates. We had a long discussion regarding regional affordable housing, the Regional Affordable Housing Task Force, which has now been set up, and the SCA board has nominated and put four representatives there. Basically, what we talked about were getting all of the needs that we might need per city out on the table, so that could be documented and forwarded on to the task force. So mostly, we just focused on the kinds of things that are of concern and needs that we have in our city. There was also an update on regional centers. I would imagine Paul might be talking a little bit more about this, but the GMPB focused on three primary policy areas in July. How large military installations should be incorporated into planning for centers, the minimum eligibility criteria for manufacturing industrial centers, and reviewing and standardizing regional growth center designations. They are looking for feedback for their September 7 upcoming meeting. The Veterans Senior and Human Services levy was also discussed, mostly just an update in that area, and then an update on the state legislative session. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Infrastructure Committee will meet this Thursday at 6:30 here in council chambers. We have three items on the agenda: Transportation Benefit District, Transportation Advisory Board, and project updates. So those interested, please come. The Regional Transit Committee, I met last June, it's been a while since reported here, in June 21, we approved the metro work plan. So that was a good thing to get done. And then just of note, their zero emission bus purchase program is in full swing. Their plan is basically to go almost 100% to that. They've got one contract out now for 60 buses, with that able to expand, I think, to close to 300 buses. So they're pretty much, their replacement fleet's going to be going to zero emission electric buses from here on out. So that's some good news there. Then this Wednesday, in two days, on 19th, we have another Regional Transit Committee meeting, and that one will be working on Metro's report on speed and reliability. So then on the 22nd of June, I was at the Washington Cities Convention for -- or Association of Washington Cities, excuse me, convention down in Vancouver representing the city. So I attended the board meeting and did some voting there for new board members and that nature, and represented us there, and that was June 22. On the 12th last week, I was at the Emergency Management Advisor Committee meeting. Nothing of note on the agenda, mainly updates there. The Eastside Fire and Rescue, I was at last week on the 13th. Two items of note on the agenda. We established two systems. One is a pay-for-performance method for the chief. So now there's an established system for the chief on how he gets paid for performance and, you know, better performance and so forth. And the other item was establishing a method for adding new partners to EFOR. So there's actual process and criteria that people can look at versus just considering it. So there's some methods decided there, which is nice. I've attended a couple workshops last week, one for affordable housing with the county and another one for suburbanization of poverty. And tomorrow, I will be representing the city again at the commute trip reduction meeting that's at PSRC. I'll be there, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On July 6, I attended the meeting of the Growth Management Policy Board, and as council member Batiste mentioned, the topics covered were the consideration of military installations as regional centers, and then the manufacturing industrial centers, as well as the regional growth centers. The conversation is very much dominated by military installations. It's a new concept, and the GMPB was really all over the place. I didn't really have much of a comment because it was really dominated by people who were affected by the existing military installations. But one thing of note that has changed and was clarified by the intent of those that are pushing for military installations to become regional centers is that they do expect them to compete for the regional funding, which was something I think I said differently last time I reported on this. So it's definitely would be a concern for any regional center that wants to remain competitive for limited funds with no new sources of funds, but more competitors for funding. Manufacturing industrial centers was talked again at length, and it really only left a few minutes to talk about regional growth centers, which is our primary concern. That was really unfortunate. We probably ended up with just a few minutes of talking about what I know the SCA caucus was most concerned about. And they had posed a number of questions, and our caucus was able to address them in the brief time that we were able to make comments. One was, should the criteria recognize some centers are vastly different in size and function and are expected to evolve at different rates? That's a criteria, there has been no real kind of size or function or growth rate criteria before, and we were in favor of that. There was a question of whether or not the performance of a growth center should be measured, and lots of conversation about that as well, and we were in favor of that. Not necessarily as a punitive tool, but there really is no standard way method today to measure the employment and population objectives and their performance towards reaching those goals, and what are the factors either helping or hindering their performance. And so we did have a short conversation about that. And then the last piece that we got in had to do with whether or not the framework should include new criteria, such as the availability of transit service. And it's amazing thing. So regional growth centers today, there's no criteria to address whether or not they're served by transit, which is kind of unthinkable if you think about it. So the -- with that, the PSRC staff will be providing, preparing their first draft, a complete draft from staff for us to consider and begin discussing, starting in September. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Tola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Issaquah City Council Services and Safety Committee did not meet this month. Our next meeting will be held Tuesday, August 8, at 6:30 p.m. here in chambers. You already heard the report. Mariah, thank you so much for sitting in for me while I was out on vacation with my family. I appreciate it. King County Growth Management Policy Council will next be meeting Wednesday, September 27, at 4 p.m., and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Elaine?
Thank you. On the -- this Thursday, the 20th, I'll be attending the Wyver 8, that's the Water Resource Inventory Area. We're still working on our planned update for the Chinook Conservation Plan. Received some updates in regards to what's been going on with the Ballard locks and the repairs necessary for that, the $30 million to $60 million bill that comes along with those recoveries. And just some concerns in regards to the warmer summer and some of the water levels. So hopefully, this fall, water will return, and the salmon will be coming back up our streams. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Lou?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two items. First off, thanks to council member Ramos for sitting in for the EFOR board meeting for me last week and reporting out. The next EFOR meeting will be a Finance and Administration Committee meeting on Wednesday, July 26, at 12:30 at headquarters, and I do not have agenda items for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Issaquah City Council Land and Shore Committee met on July 6. We had four items on our agenda. Three of those items are on our agenda tonight, so I, to the extent that I have reporting out to do on those, I can do that at that time. The one item I wanted to talk about briefly is Agenda Bill 7452, Transit-Oriented Development. We had, you'll recall that the meeting on July 6, we had a special council meeting right before Land and Shore, and on the consent agenda was that TOD Agenda Bill that was referred to Land and Shore the very next hour. So we had a presentation that included Hal Ferriss from Spectrum, Spectrum Development Solutions, and Spectrum is one of the parties that would be involved in the TOD project. And just to recap, the TOD project, it's proposed to be a three-party, public-private partnership between the city, Spectrum Development Solutions, King County Housing Authority combo there, and Century Link. And it would, proposal would be to redevelop the site that currently functions and operates. For Century Link, truck parking and material storage is over by the Transit Center on SR900. It's sort of just next door east of the Transit Center. And the proposal would be a 325 multifamily mixed-use development and 110 to 165 affordable units, 36,000 square feet of non-residential space, a portion to be deeded to the city to allow for nonprofit services, and a quarter-acre plaza open to the public. We haven't had a lot of public conversation about this. We are about to. The Land and Shore was asked to look at two memorandums of understanding, and the reason we were looking at those prior to, when we might have a lot more community conversation about this, is because there's a deadline to apply for funding from the King County TOD Fund. Land and Shore recommended to bring that forward to the full council for the consideration of the MOUs, and that will be at our council meeting on August 7. One of the questions that was asked to Hal Ferriss when he was there presenting from Spectrum, we had, there were a couple of concerns raised from the community about the fact that we haven't had any, we would normally have open houses, or we have more of a community conversation, and Hal says he's well aware of that and normally would host a number of open houses and is planning to doing that, getting a lot of input from the community, starting in mid-September, assuming the full council approves the MOUs, which would be even before knowing if there would be a grant for this project and what that grant amount might be. So that, so this is the beginning of the public conversation, not the end of it, and we will, I'm sure, get a fairly in-depth presentation on the project like we did at Land and Shore. There was one piece of interesting information that Hal mentioned that I wanted to just mention, and that was, we've heard particularly in the months that we've, since we've had a moratorium in place, about economic conditions being the right, having the right economic conditions for getting the kind of development that we want. And we've talked about, in particular, mixed use, and that having mixed use, on one hand, requires that we have the right economic market conditions, and that we don't have that, that time's not right now, that maybe in five or six years, we'd have that. And Hal said, I'd have never heard this before, I don't think anybody on the committee had either, that the soils in the valley are such that it adds $15 to $20 per square foot for foundation costs. So I think one of the questions that we probably would have is, you know, how does that affect market conditions? And is that going to always affect market conditions? We didn't have that conversation because we weren't there to talk about that that night at Land and Shore, but it is a piece of information that I thought was significant enough that I wanted to let the entire council know that that's what Hal Ferriss of Spectrum said. Next, Land and Shore meets on August 3 at 6:30 here in council chambers, and the agenda has not been set yet. My report.
Thank you. There will not be an executive session this evening. I have some sad news to share with the community tonight. Longtime community member Dorothy Nitter passed away on July 6 at age 92. She dedicated thousands of volunteer hours serving our community. She also helped create the Issaquah Farmers Market and ran Salmon Days for many years. She was inducted into our Hall of Fame in 1995 and was recognized as Volunteer of the Year in 1991. Of course, our thoughts are with Dorothy's family at this time. I attended the July 13 Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board meeting, where we approved a draft financial strategy for the Transportation 2040 Update, and I chaired the July 13 Sound Transit Capital Committee meeting, where we approved a number of action items related to East Link, I-405 Bus Rapid Transit, and the Linwood Link Extension. That concludes the mayor's report this evening. And with that, I would ask if the accounts payable and payroll have been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. And I would now ask the clerk to read into the record the consent calendar.
The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of the accounts payables and payroll of July 17. Items B, C, and D seeks approval of the minutes of the special meeting of June 9, June 10, and July 6. Item E, AB 7112 LED Streetlights Department of Commerce Grant, seeks to accept grant. Item F, AB 7128 Wildwood Reservoir Rehabilitation Project, seeks to accept project. Item G, AB 7133 2016 Water Main Rehabilitation Project, seeks to accept project. Item H, AB 7250 Transportation Benefit District, seeks referral to Council Infrastructure Committee. Item I, AB 7455 Human Services Commission Midterm Appointment, seeks to confirm. Item J, AB 7456 Additional 2017 Staffing Request, seeks referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. This concludes the reading.
Thank you, Tisha. And with that, I would ask, does any council member desire to remove any item for separate Stacy?
I move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
With that, all approval, all With that, all approval, all in favor of approving the consent calendar submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries unanimously. Moving now to the first of three public hearings this evening. The first Agenda Bill 7313, Capital Improvement Plan Including Transportation 2018 to 2022. With that, Jen Olson, our Director of Finance, for a brief introduction before I open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Butler. Tonight is a continued discussion about the proposed capital improvement plan for 2018 through 2022. The councils had a number of different discussions about the proposed capital budget. Per council policy, the capital improvement plan seeks to achieve the objectives in our financial policy, including a vision for growth and levels of service, ensuring that planning efforts are changing with the demand, financial responsibility, and maintaining a high-quality service infrastructure. The proposed five-year plan has identified projects in a variety of different asset categories with a total five-year CIP dollar amount of about $165 million. Funding sources are, come from a variety of different places, from special revenue funds or special funding sources such as REIT or mitigation funds, grants, developer contributions, utility funding, the general fund, and other cash on hand. There are some unfunded projects that the council is in the process of discussing along with all of those. You can see primarily those projects that have a debt requirement as part of the funding are for mainly park improvement projects or transportation-related projects for a total unfunded piece of the five-year plan of about $58 million. There have been a number of discussions about the proposed plan. We started back in May of 2017 where we, the council conducted their first council work session, starting the public hearing in, on June 5th. Some additional council work sessions. Tonight is a continuation of the public hearing. There, at the last council work session, it was identified that additional discussion was necessary. So there are some new meetings. You can see down at the bottom of the screen, we have a new council work session identified for August 17th. I believe it's August 10th, actually.
I think it's the 14th.
The 14th. Okay, we'll get that corrected and we'll make sure that that's online. We got that after three tries. And then, of course, proposed continued public hearing and consideration and adoption of the proposed plan. So with that, I wanted to keep it brief to hand it back to you, Mayor Butler.
Thank you, Jen. And with that, a reminder, the same, same comments that I made early about, earlier about guidelines for public participation apply to this. And I will open the public hearing at 7:38 and ask if anyone has signed up to speak.
No one has signed up.
Connie, would you like to speak to this item?
I'm trying to write it down so I don't forget. Square. Okay. Hi, my name's Connie Marsh. I live on Squawk Mountain here in Issaquah. So I have been going to CIP meetings for at least, I don't know, maybe 18 years. And my favorite, and I think this should be the process for next year, is where each of the sort of chapters gets put out to a committee for in-depth conversation where the community can engage in a more personable way. Work sessions are difficult because the last one was very long and public comment would have made it onerous. So this is a way where the community can actually discuss it in advance of the public hearing when everybody has done all of the work and we have the ability to change it in our interest. So now, in an attempt to change it in our interest now, Dog Park, not Splash Park. Everybody wants a Dog Park. It's been delayed forever. Just do it, for goodness sake. Put it in the CIP with funding. We need to allocate dollars to help Metro build park and rides outside of the city limits. And that has not been addressed anywhere on any plan ever, but we need to keep people from needing to come through our town. They don't have options. They don't have funding. And we can help them with that. You can see from the community survey that you're going to be talking about this evening, the community still wants land. We need our hillsides protected, so we need to buy our forested land. And we need a trail creekside to go from the outside of town down to Lake Smamish State Park. That needs to be a priority because the community deserves a little more. We've been sort of slapped about. And the last thing is, we have oddly a very expensive public square or area in the central Issaquah plan that the community has never discussed, what that might look like or what that could do for them. And so I think that needs to pop back out outside of Prost 2 or whatever we're calling this city thing in a, in a conversation of its own. Because if this is going to be a core area of our core, we need a lot of input. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Connie. Mary, I see you moving towards the lectern.
My name is Mary Lynch, and I reside at 2690 Northwest Oakhurst Drive, Issaquah, Washington. I'm back again tonight. I spoke with the first public hearing, and I also spoke last week at the city council sub-meeting. And I want to formally, again, submit my comments about the central area, or excuse me, the capital improvement plans. I'm glad that it is out earlier than it was last year. I want to support what Connie says, is I really think it needs to have more public review and, as well as city council review. The seven points that I made last week, and I'll make again, is I want to know why the S-900 to South 54th funding scheme is not moved up further so that any work that's done by developers can be done concurrently. We've heard from Public Works that it saves money if they can do this and go and work with the same contractors. It also is less, I think, disruptive to the people and, not only we live there, but also all the high amount of through traffic that uses our road. So that's not been addressed. I also mentioned that the South 54th to Lake Mont Boulevard portion has been pulled out of here. It's been in there for 30 years and now it's out of there. And I believe the last concurrency that was done as far as the central area plan, that portion had to be done because a center turn lane is needed for concurrency. So that's not been addressed anywhere that I can see. Also, I would like to see that detailed assumptions on the portion of these projects that the developers are going to pay for should be part of the backup plan so that you know what the entire project is going to cost. So if for some reason something happens with a developer, they get halfway through, you need to know what the entire project is going to be. And also so that hopefully you can fund those at the same time, not only just for Newport Way. Another one is the Mountains to Sound Greenway. As Connie kind of alluded to, is there's no money in here to build the rest of the Mountains to Sound Greenway, which is part of the Green necklace. And that should be identified in here, and how that's going to be funded and what city funds. The water filtration purchase system to replace the existing lease system for PFOS, that's not identified in here. And then the other one that came up at the last Land and Shores meeting that I heard is there's a water tower slated and needed apparently for growth at the Highlands. And they're identifying that they need land, and that's part of what this annexation is going to be talked about tonight. Well, where is the funding for that? And if it's known now, even if it is six years, that should be part of this plan so that you know when it's needed and where it's going to go. So hopefully going forward, we'll have discussions with the public and also at the city council sub-meetings that we can also participate in. But hopefully, public meetings too. I'll submit this later for public record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else desiring to speak? Justin?
Thank you, Mayor Butler, again. Justin Walsh, 2196 Schibier. I just have a couple of comments regarding the CIP. The first is in regards to EQ 007, the server replacement. I was a bit surprised in looking at a bit in the details in this, that it utilizes several servers, moving to a physical server using virtual servers as opposed to a cloud-based solution. Looks like we're looking at 2008 technology to solve a 2017 problem in 2022 as opposed to looking to the cloud-based solutions that we have now and the future ones that are going to reduce costs, increase resiliency, increase data portability, and increase redundancy. And so that's something to keep in mind as we move forward with that project. Regarding the Splash Park, we're also creating a pool. I have issues seeing that those are separate projects. When they're both water-based projects, we can combine them and create a truly innovative indoor-outdoor space using less money and preserve some of those funds for things such as a Dog Park. My other problem with the CIP as it currently stands is we're not, I'm not seeing anything related to telecommunications or our energy utility, specifically working with PSC or telecommunications companies. We're going to be quickly behind the curve as we develop our urban core unless we start putting projects in the CIP that bring fiber in to remedy that missed opportunity that we had when fiber went in in the Highlands. We won't be able to use our tech-talented residents in the urban core unless we have clean power and high-speed internet for them to work with and start looking at projects that maybe tap off the BPA lines as opposed to going past Issaquah and then rerouting through Bellevue, which leaves us open to catastrophic failures. These are gaps, and I think we need to make sure that those are included in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Anyone else desiring to speak on this item? Anyone else? Third and final call. With that, then, I will call on...
Do we make a motion? Is this the time to make a motion?
This would be the perfect time.
Okay. Is there time for comments after that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I would move to continue the public hearing to September 5th, 2017, and refer Agenda Bill 7313 to the August 14th, 2017 Council Committee Work Session for additional review and recommendation, returning to the full council on September 5th, 2017.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Stacy?
I just wanted to make a comment that, or remind the council that there are, the work session that we're going to have on August 14th is for the purpose of going through the projects again. Now that we've gotten to know the nuts and bolts of the new CIP plan, then there was an interest at the last work session for us to go back to the project list. And Jen has sent us all a list. It's a starting point. And it pulls together the comments that the council members have made so far about the projects. And if there are, there's a place for you to think you might, I haven't actually looked at it, so you might actually have. But I think there's a place for comments for you to make to send back to Jen, and also an opportunity for you to provide additional comments, which would be great if you wanted staff to be prepared at that work session. The other task to be completed is that risk assessment. And the four of us that were at the work session last week had not completed our risk assessments. So I'm assuming that all seven of us have not completed our risk assessment. So we, she extended that, I believe it's maybe the 31st. So I was just going to remind everybody to complete those tasks. Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion? Mary Lou?
I have a question, I guess, for the mayor and the council president. The comment from Connie this evening about breaking this into smaller chunks, does that fit into the schedule for this year?
I don't think so. We, we used to break it into smaller chunks and refer to committee that would prioritize those and bring them back. But I'm guessing that that is...
So we had a little bit of, so I think I know the answer, but I'm going to let, yes, the city administrator respond to that question. I think it has to do with scheduling.
Thank you. New this year, and through the council's new capital budget policy and the financial management policy, is the shift to biennial capital budgeting for the capital piece. And so what's exciting is actually for next year will be the opportunity for those breakout sessions in the capital budget schedule to have those conversations about potential projects and a larger public engagement effort on the actual capital budget. For this year, timing-wise, there has not been a scheduled separate breakout sessions by the asset categories. And so that is essentially what would be on the, on the schedule for next year's continued two-year capital budget cycle.
Stacy?
I think the other part that we heard at the work session is that the timing is tight for hopefully passing the CIP in early September because budget, preparing the proposed budget will be in full swing. And not having that piece makes it, not having the CIP adopted makes it much more difficult for the administration to prepare the draft budget. I think that's the other piece that we heard.
That is exactly correct, is to break out the different components of the overall budget, is to have those discussions about the capital budget prior to so that we're, we're giving more opportunity to have discussions on the full operating budget and start at the beginning of the year on the capital asset piece. Thank you.
Is that...
Does that answer your question?
Paul?
There were two comments tonight related to water. One of them was the PFOS treatment, the other one, the water tower that we did discuss at a committee meeting earlier this month. I know we're doing a water system, a water system study or whatever that called. And that, that conversation hasn't come into this, this CIP development. What, and I guess it's entirely possible, I don't know if Sheldon is here, that it would inform the CIP because I know that something like water treatment, you know, could be hypothetically, you know, be part of that. So, yeah, thank you. If you could address that for me. And because based upon the answer, I'm, I think that those are valid issues to raise and question why they wouldn't be in this CIP.
Yes, I'm Sheldon Lynn, Director of Public Works Engineering. To respond to the question about the treatment of the PFOS and the replacement of the system that's currently leased, there is a capital improvement project in the program for Water Treatment Plant. That is the facility that will combine all the water treatment needs of the utility as well as replacement of the PFOS treatment. So it will, it's in there. It's, and right now, we are currently underway with the Water System Plan Update. And we expect to draft out, excuse me, by the end of this year for council's consideration and then moving through the DOH approval process as well as King County approval process.
Okay, that addressed the PFOS. Thank you. What about the water tower? That came up at, I think it was the work session, or is it Land and Shore earlier this month?
There, there is in the capital program a reservoir pump station transmission main project where the transmission main and pump station is known as the SPAR water facilities. That is to provide a redundant way up the hill for services because right now, the services all go up, I should say, the water mains all go up one geologic hazard. So we want to create a redundant one through another area. So hopefully, if you have a problem in one geologic hazard, you don't get it in the other geologic hazard. So we're trying to provide some redundancy of supply up to the Highlands. The reservoir is needed not specifically for the Issaquah Highlands, but it is actually needed for the central Issaquah plan. With the increase in population that's expected with the central Issaquah development, there is a need for additional equalizing and operating storage for the valley floor. So that's the purpose behind that reservoir. And its elevation is the same elevation as the elevation of the city's west side reservoir and cemetery reservoirs, which provide the valley floor of water as well.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Stacy?
So Sheldon, I didn't, so you said you would explain the reservoir, but did you actually say it's in the CIP?
It is in the CIP. It's in the, it's in the capital improvement plan. Right now, the pump station and transmission main is within the five-year period with the reservoir being out. I believe it's eight to 10 years or something like that.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of continuing the public hearing to September 5th, 2017, and referring the Agenda Bill to the August 14th... 5, 2017, and referring the Agenda Bill to the August 14 council work session for additional review and recommendation, returning to the council on September 5, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously.
Fred, can I announce?
And so, Stacy?
Thank you. Can I depart here and say that...
Of course you can.
I missed something important in my committee reports, and that is that Land and Shore's special meeting for tomorrow night has been canceled because it became clear this morning that we didn't have anything on the agenda that necessitated a special meeting on a sunny summer evening.
I'm not seeing much disappointment among your colleagues about canceling that meeting. Moving now to Agenda Bill 7433, annexation of King County Island and establishment of pre-annexation zoning. Trish Hanen from Development Services Division to provide some background information and to set up the public hearing. Trish, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first public hearing on the first annexation is called the King County Island. It's known as the King County Island PAA Potential Annexation Area. It's been in the comprehensive plan forever, and we are attempting at this point to annex it into the city. This is the big picture of where it's located. We met with, backing up a bit, you all met on June 5 when you first saw this annexation proposal, and you moved forward with the ordinance resolution to move forward, to send it to the boundary review board, to set up the two public hearings for pre-annexation zoning. And I wanted to touch a little bit on why you wanted to do the pre-annexation zoning is that if, we usually do annexations with pre-annexation zoning when the comparable zoning with King County isn't what the city would like to see there. And in this instance, the King County parcel that the city has purchased to work on the TOD, that parcel now is zoned mineral, and we wouldn't be able to have that land use there. At this point, we would have to actually rezone it to IC to move that TOD forward. So we're doing the pre-annexation zoning now, so that when it comes in, we'll be ready to go with the TOD application. So I just wanted to give you that reference. We also met at Land and Shore to answer a lot of the questions that came out of council June 5. And part of that helped us to realize that we wanted a different pre-annexation zoning categories for, for the parcels, and, and we'll show you that in just a second. These are the surrounding zones. It's right up near the urban village zone of the Highlands. It's community facilities, facilities to the north, and then it's right up against I-90 to the south. This is the new map, and Tola right away goes to, yes, north is that way, which is unusual for a map, but it helps us show what Land and Shore asked for, is to see what the projects would look like, as much as we know at this point. With sort of general site plans, none of them have been adopted, none of them are officially the last site plan, but it was sort of to give Land and Shore and the full council an idea of what land would be used for these future projects. And as you can see, the zoning changed, the proposed zoning changed from Land and Shore. You see at the south is still IC, and that's where Century Link would be moved. The middle part of the King County shop site area would still be open space. And to the north, a smaller parcel is community facilities, facilities, and that's potentially for elementary school. Coming south, and, if you west, it's such a weird way to have north that way. Community facilities, facility is the reservoir site that Sheldon just spoke of, with the pump station coming this way to the south, leaving more of the King County shop site area open space to the north. And then the two Wash Dot parcels to the south are both open space in this, in the new proposal. And so also the three that are OS that are, or the two that are OS of Wash Dot and the CFF that are Wash Dot, those would all be considered down zones because they're currently zoned residential. And according to Sheldon, he's spoken with Wash Dot, and they're okay with the down zone. That was a question that came up in Land and Shore, was to make sure that Wash Dot was okay with that. You also asked about how much forest would be left, and again, this is generally because we don't have site plans for all three projects. And so we had our, our geniuses in Public Works test out what the parcels would be left, would be left forested, and what, what would be left as projects, and they did a little generalized map for us and a little chart at the, at the top. But that's to sort of get that in your head on what would be left. Yes.
So zoning is quasi-judicial, so I can only ask if, if a question has been asked previously in the invest, in the review of this, right? Can I ask for new information in a quasi-judicial?
I, I think you can.
And would you comment, please?
Yes, this is an open record hearing, so you can ask for any information you want during this hearing.
Okay, thank you. 6.7 acres is small for an elementary school footprint, is it not?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. The smallest to date that Issaquah School District done is just a little over seven.
Oh, so the school district has done something in roughly...
Right. Grand Ridge, I think, is seven something, but usually 10 is what they use, so they were really doing a good job when they did it with seven, so we're still trying to...
Grand Ridge is approximately seven.
Correct.
No, it's 10.
I thought it was seven something. Oh, I apologize. I thought they had already gone below 10.
Gotcha.
So now I know.
But this is, this is something that is, is within the bounds of possibility for something that the school district would consider as a sufficient footprint for an elementary school.
Correct. We're working with them to try to figure out what's the smallest site that could still have a appropriate school on it. Yes.
Thank you.
Stacy, did you have a...
I have a question. There's, I'll call it a companion piece that's coming forward at some point, I understand, which is in, a code change that Planning Policy Commission discussed at a meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Thursday night?
And it's my understanding that maybe that code change needs to happen as well as a CFF zoning for this upper parcel that we're talking about for a possible school site. So what is the status of that code? Because the council has not seen that in any document yet.
Right. Planning Policy Commission had their public hearing on Thursday night, and they are recommending it forward to you all, and you all should see it in August. I think it comes to Land and Shore, because we couldn't, because of the last part of the, their hearing, we couldn't make it the beginning meeting in August, so I think it comes to you all at the, in September.
Comes to the council to be referred to Land and Shore in September?
Right, but I think there's a informal, from what I remember in the schedule, there's an informal review of Land and Shore, just to try to work out anything beforehand, so that you get, try to get two touches at it.
So I don't understand what you mean by informal, so...
Well, the Agenda Bill wouldn't be completely, it's not put to, it's not, the Agenda Bill didn't meet the, can't meet the deadline, because we just had the public hearing.
I'm just trying to figure out when the council's going to see that code change that I think is a companion to what the school district would need.
So the code change is something that is, came out of a joint city council and school board conversation in January of 16, where we talked about code issues that the city had in its current zoning code. Sorry, Keith Niven, Director of Economic Development and Development Services. So, so there was identified basically a year and a half ago that we had some existing code problems that we really needed to rectify to help the school district build the four schools that they had gotten approved through their successful levy. The, the coincidence that that's happening at generally the same time that we're talking about annexing this property and putting zoning on this property that would apply for a school, I think is, is mere coincidence. So what I would tell you is, right now, the CFF zone basically limits the, the density and heights of that zone to the adjacent most restricted property. And because the only land use that's occupied next to this property is east, is that right? East, yes. Sorry, this map's going the other direction. Is east, that's urban village, that's Issaquah Highlands, which allows a building height of 85 feet. So, so I think, I think, I don't think they're connected. So I think the, the concern that you raised, that the code revision needs to be reviewed in companion with this, is not, I don't, I guess I don't share that perspective. I think this can happen in advance, or in parallel.
So could a school, this, be built on this site without that code change?
I believe it could, but it would require similar administrative adjustment of standards as we have processed for other schools within the city. And one of the reasons why we've requested some of the changes to the standards in CFF for schools is because basically the administration was being asked to amend standards for things like impervious surfaces and others. So part of it is, you know, as you shrink the footprint of the parcel itself, the amount of impervious goes up, because the buildings and the parking lot take up a certain amount of space. And so the current CFF standards for impervious, which limit it to 50%, would need to be revised, but there are provisions in the existing code that allow that. There's, it's just, it's just another process to go through.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is either administrative adjustment of standards, which is done administratively, or the new code change would work. But one of those needs to happen in order for a school to be built here. And when exactly is the Agenda Bill coming for a first touch before the council?
On the code amendment?
Yeah, sorry.
September. Yeah. September.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on...
Uh...
Okay.
Thought I heard a question.
I have a question on process, Mr. Mayor.
Is your question answered, Stacy?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Mary Lou?
I have a question on process. Um, so Trish, this evening, this is the public hearing.
The first of two.
And there is a recommendation in here that, that council provides some direction tonight about revising what came out of the Land and Shore on it. Are we just doing the public hearing this evening, or are you asking us to make a decision on whether or not the language should be revised this evening?
Because there's two public hearings, we're asking you to at least have us write, draft the ordinance for you all, and, and, and ask for any more information that you would like to have before the second public hearing, which is September 5. So that's what this, this part is, to, to hear public comment, get more questions from you all before we come to the next public hearing.
So we'll have an opportunity tonight to talk about the proposed revision and whether or not we want to direct staff to do that.
Sure.
Thanks.
Not seeing any additional questions or discussion, I will remind those that have signed up to speak on Agenda Bill 7433 that the same guidance for public participation applies, and I will open the public...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. Point, point of order, there's more to the presentation, is there not?
There was just one more slide.
Oh.
Sorry, but, and, and I'll be quick. We received a lot of public comments, as you know. You, I think, I, there was at least 10 of them, perhaps, and this was one of the pictures that was in one of them, one of the public comments, and I think it shows, it's a really good picture from the valley floor with, you can see the little Swedish building poking out over on the, on the side there, but I just wanted this, I just knew it would look really great on the big screen. But that's, that's it. So now you can open up the...
Thank you. I'll open the, the public hearing at 8:05 and ask if anyone has signed up to speak.
No.
Okay, Connie Marsh again, Levon Squawk Mountain. So I'm going to start out with what I think should happen. I think that all of the parcels, except for the intensive commercial and the one CFF parcel for Sheldon's Water Tower, should be community facilities, open space. Sheldon's Water Tower should have some guidance to it indicating that it shall not be visible, and then it could be built. Because, and this is the big segue, in our comprehensive plan, in our land use vision, we have a very, very straightforward sentence saying that we are going to protect our forested hillsides. And you can see from the statistics that were provided, we are clearly not doing that. And when you look at this picture, you can see that the top line of trees is paramount in protecting us from looking at yet more of Issaquah Highlands. So when you ask the community whether they should say, yes, we, we want to cut those trees because a school needs to be put in place, you're asking us to take down something that will never be, come back. You are taking it away. There are other places that schools could be built. There always is. They might cost more money, it might not be a heck of a deal. But in this situation, this is a community value that your own comprehensive plan emphatically puts as a top priority. So community facilities, open space on all of the parcels, except for the intensive commercial and the dubbed Sheldon's Water Tower. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Steve, I see you moving to the lectern, followed by the Issaquah School District Superintendent. Welcome to you both.
Steve Crawford, Director of Counter Project, Issaquah School District.
Ron Thiele, Superintendent, Issaquah School District. And we would like to share some information about the potential use of this site. First of all, thank you, Mayor Butler, thank you, council, for allowing us this opportunity. We do have a short presentation, too. You need to get that in.
No, I just wanted to use this slide once up before we actually open this.
Okay.
Oh, you're going to use that slide first.
So I think it would be best to have Mr. Crawford kind of share some of our thinking around how the potential use of this site would occur, and then we would certainly be available for any questions as well.
So to start with, since this slide is up, you're looking at a view from the middle, basically, of I-90 at 900, and yes, you can see a bit of the hospital. These dead trees here are off of the property to the west, and that the trees behind there would basically remain all the way across the ridge, so that the site would not be, the building would not be visible from the west or from the south. Slide show. Nope, I think I lost it. If you could just pull it up in the slide show. So why is the Highland side a great location for a new neighborhood elementary? The projected 2017, 2018 enrollment at Clark Elementary will be 808 students. Clark will be our largest elementary school, constructed with the largest number of classrooms, and it'll still open with 10 portable classrooms. Grand Ridge Elementary will be at 735 students. There's 125 kindergarten students in the Grand Ridge attendance area that are transported to Challenger and Endeavor Elementary Schools due to the lack of classroom space at Grand Ridge. Grand Ridge, excuse me, also has 10 portable classrooms. You can see that there's a pretty small area of attendance in the Highlands that fills Grand Ridge. Clark has a pretty large attendance area. Just a little bit more detail there in case there was any questions about specifics. This... This shows that within the Grand Ridge attendance area, how the Grand Ridge Kindergartens are split to Challenger and Endeavor. Issaquah Valley Elementary basically serves west of Front Street on the valley floor. Two thousand sixteen, seventeen Highland Area students. Eighty Grand Ridge kindergarten students are transported to Challenger Elementary. We provide busing, but there will be some that get transported by their parents. Forty-five Grand Ridge kindergarten students are transported to Endeavor off of Doofy Hill Road. There's three hundred and thirty-seven elementary students in the Highlands that are transported to Clark Elementary. There's another hundred and seventy-three elementary students in the Black Nugget Overdale area that are transported to Clark. There's five hundred and ten students that are transported to Clark. There's six hundred and thirty-five students that are transported out of the area. So, using the trip generation numbers per student from the final Clark traffic study, students transported to and from Clark Elementary generate in the AM peak eighty-two trips, in the afternoon peak, a hundred and seventy-three trips, and in the PM peak, a hundred and seven trips. It's three hundred and sixty trips every day that we use to transport students in and out of the downtown area. Reducing enrollment at Clark Elementary is critical to accommodate core area growth at Issaquah Valley and Clark Elementary Schools. Grand Ridge is on a ten-acre site, going to an urban school plan, a three-story building with a compacted footprint, reduced surface parking, smaller play areas, and reducing the proposed footprint allows reducing the proposed footprint to about seven acres. OSPI recommends ten acres for an elementary school site. Grand Ridge is on a ten-acre site. At Land and Shore, we brought a site plan that was a seven point one acre parcel at the top of the hill, basically. Taking into comments and considerations that we've heard, we've sort of relooked at that. Again, we're still dealing with concept site plans, but this basically reduces the footprint down to six point two five acres. There's actually five point eight five acres that are within the proposed annexation area, and we've sort of scrunched a little bit of area from the north area there, in an area that's already been cleared between the boundary of the annexation and the existing trail around the detention pond. So, the existing trees will remain outside the footprint area, and will screen the building from south and westerly views. School will be compatible with existing Highlands residential and commercial development. The option Plan B also preserves a forty-foot strip of trees along the eastern section of the property. It's another point four acres of trees that would remain. And a neighborhood school serves the local community, reduces transportation, and enhances sustainability goals. I think another thing to keep in mind is that in an elementary school, our soft sand playfield areas are about an acre plus in size. When you start talking about other school facilities, it gets even larger when you're talking about a football field and track, and a football field and track, and a softball field and a baseball field for high schools. But even at the elementary level, that acre, that's getting in that seventeen to twenty percent range of the total site area, which is basically open area used for recreational purposes, but again, it's considered impervious, so.
I just wanted to add a couple of things. First of all, Tola, earlier you had questioned about the size, and can we do a school on this site? And I'll be honest, when these plans were first brought my way, I had some concerns. We've never built a school on this small of a site. But as I go back to the conversation that the Issaquah School District Board and the council had, oh, a year and a half or so ago, we talked a lot about how can we reduce footprints? We know the property is a very expensive and rare commodity. We want to try to preserve as much as we can. So, I commend Steve and his team for really crunching this site down, even since the last land and shore meeting. And again, I keep asking questions, well, what does that do to the cost of the building? Is it going to feel like our other schools? Is there going to be equity in this school? He's convinced that that's the case, and he's working hard to convince me as well. And I've seen what he's been capable of in the past, so I do have a lot of optimism. But I would point out that this school, just from the get-go, would save over thirty percent of the land that we would normally use for a school. So, we took that conversation very seriously, and we're trying to implement some design features to this school that will preserve those views and things as well. More importantly, we've had a lot of conversations about traffic in this community. We just showed you a way to take hundreds of car trips off, coming from the Highlands down to the valley floor. I think that's pretty significant. And I would also point out that many of those car trips aren't going to be just displaced to another place, they'll actually become walkers. So, I think there's a benefit there as well.
Does that conclude your comments?
Unless there are any questions, yes, it does. Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you both. Has anyone else signed up to speak? Yes, Lisa?
I wasn't signed up to speak, but I'm Lisa Callen. I live at three one five three Northeast Marquette Way in Issaquah, and I'm also on the Issaquah School Board. So, I, one, I just wanted to thank the board, the council, the board, the council, you can see what's in my brain, for consideration of the zoning and giving the school district the opportunity, should the zoning go forward, to do a much deeper dive in the planning and what that means for getting a school built where the growth and the demand is right next to where the students are in the city of Issaquah. I know as a Highlands resident, and having my son going through Grand Ridge, knowing the density of that area with children, and I think you'll probably hear it more frequently, a school gets back into play, and people are paying attention more to council agendas. Hopefully, you'll get a chance to hear, too, from the community members at large of the impacts of the schools and the growth and what they're doing. So, I think that we are looking at all kinds of sites. We're doing deep dives as a district on what each one of those sites brings to the table, not only for our education mandate, but also from a community facilities perspective and from a land use perspective in all of the municipalities that we deal with. We have five across the Issaquah School District, and certainly, the growth that's happening right here in the city of Issaquah is paramount to the needs that are taking place. If you have questions on land use outside of the quasi-judicial and the zoning, I want to make sure and offer up anybody in the school district, as well as myself, as a resource, to answer questions and to go into detail with you about that. So, make sure you have that, as well as to the community. We certainly would love to hear from anybody in the community about your concerns of what the school district might be planning in that arena. And the other aspect I wanted to also just point out was that in any school that we're building, not only is it an educational resource for educational purposes, which is its primary point, but it is a community facility and a community resource. So, the playfields and that open space that's out there will be used by the community, as we well know from having conversations with our Little League teams and our various community organizations that borrow our resources and use those resources all the time. So, this would be in addition and a support to the community that way, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else desiring to speak? Susan, beat you to it, and you're next.
I'm Susan Neville, and I'm at twenty-eight twenty-five Northwest Pine Cone Drive. Excuse me. It's really hard to go up against the school district and say, why are we building this school on the side of the mountain? I just heard all the reasons why we need it. We all agree we need it, but why this land? And that's what I'm here today to talk about. The Issaquah Comm Plan put us on a path to fix the past rezonings we've gone through, and the mistakes that have forever scarred our hillsides. And I'm looking at another proposal to also may have this happen to us again. We don't have a clear development to look at, to say, this will be protected, we think it's going to be eight acres, but once you get up there and start to build, you don't know what the side of the mountain's going to do. I believe that, and I'm here to support Connie in her decision to rezone at this point today for open space, and to consider when there's more proposals in place to view and decide, is this the right thing to do for this part of our visual hillside? There's, we have a lot of land, we have a lot of money, we have a lot of support for our schools, and I just don't know if this is the right answer. City Council recently really stepped up and voted to protect Cougar Mountain with the Bergsma Development Agreement reversal. And I'm really hoping that they'll take the time and really look at this closely. Like I said, it's really difficult. We all agree we need schools. We don't want to put our education on the back burner. But is this the right thing to do? Thank you.
Thank you, Susan, and, yes, sir.
Hi, Matthew Meyer, one zero nine five Northeast Park Drive in Issaquah. I had a concern that that particular area of land, the best I can tell in the overlays, is identified by the King County Landslide Risk Assessment as an extreme hazard, and I'm concerned about building an elementary school in an area of extreme landslide hazard, and with the limited footprint, as I've heard tonight, I would also be concerned that any kind of abatement of that landslide hazard would probably shrink the footprint a great deal for setbacks and retaining walls that might be required to secure the hillside. And I would just think that, as much as we need schools, I have a young daughter who would most likely be attending that school, given our geography. I understand the need for schools, and, but I'd just be worried about kind of putting our next generation on the side of a hill. And I know that would never get that far in construction, but I'd worry we'd go down a path that might not be very easily panned out based on the geography. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else desiring to speak? Mary?
My name is Mary Lynch, and I reside at two six nine oh Northwest Oakhurst Drive, Issaquah, Washington. And I just want to support what Connie and Susan has already said, and really think this should go forward, especially this parcel, as open space. That's what our goals and our policy has said. That's what the central area plan said, is that we're supposed to, the reason for the central area plan is density is supposed to be on the valley floor and/or where we've already cut our trees down. I think the city and the school district needs to work more openly with the developers and look at what is possible within the city that could be used, looking at smaller footprints, looking at different types of schools. I question the transportation some of there, because only those that are on the west side of Highlands and Ninth, I believe, would probably walk to school, because with the amount of traffic that goes through the Highlands, through traffic, I don't see that as a safe avenue to allow pedestrians, or students to walk to and from an elementary school. So, I think when you look at the overall long-term effect of the traffic, and where other, they might be coming from other areas of the plateau, that it may shift the traffic from Highlands, but that doesn't mean that it's not going to put it someplace else. So, I think an overall traffic flow needs to be done for this, as also some of the other new schools that are done. And I would hope going forward that we would, when I was on the Central Area Task Force, we asked then that we start working more closely with the city. That was in two thousand and ten, eleven, and twelve. It wasn't until last year that the city council sat down with the school board. And again, that was with me pushing. I would hope that that discussion is more open, and that's what we heard last week at some of the meetings, is working with the PTAs and the parents. They could put pressures on the developers. We have some major developers that are here locally that might be able to help us. We might be able to locate some schools here. And we also have other communities that need to step up to the plate. Newcastle, King County, and some Mammoth need to step up to the plate to help us. We're not the only city and piece of landholder in Issaquah. So, I would hope that we save this piece, these trees up here, because the other thing we haven't done is a tree canopy. The last tree canopy study we did for Issaquah was in two thousand and six. That was an estimate. We still have not done a tree canopy to know if we're any ways near close to our fifty percent goal, and I would say that we're not. If you look just right now in exoft, the amount of trees that have gone, even in the Issaquah School District property that have gone, we haven't replaced those. And we don't have any good accountability when we put tree money into the tree fund to make sure we replace those trees. I've not seen any accounting on that. So, I would hope that going forward with this one, we make it open space. If it comes back and justifies, and the due diligence is done for this parcel of land, and it justifies, you can always change the annex, or the code. So, please, thank you, save our trees.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Steve?
Steve Pereira, one seventy, Northeast Dogwood Street. So, a couple preliminary things. The first was, I think this was not communicated well. There was three, I understand there are three thousand letters that were sent out to folks that live within three hundred feet of currently zoned CFF facility. This issue kind of affects all of Issaquah, so it needs to be broadened and communicated in a way that kind of involves the community. So, I would urge to go back and look at a way that does that. The second piece is, this is the second time I've heard of a zoning issue come up. The first was the planned or proposed idea of moving the, what's called the Staples Lot, out of the Old Town area. This is a zoning area. And I mentioned this in context of the quote-unquote permit or building moratorium. So, my point is, I think we need to look at zoning as part of the building moratorium as a whole issue, not as separate pieces. So, I would throw that back to the council for consideration. On this particular issue, I know when I moved here nine and a half years ago, I didn't have any kids, although I would love my nephews, who I've talked about before, with the council, to go to Issaquah School District, but I liked that the community supported its kids. So, I'm making a distinction between supporting the Issaquah School District and is this a good zoning policy? And it doesn't seem to be a good policy to me to change that zoning. I would concur with the CFOS as designated, except for the reservoir lot. I know that I've come before council and talked about not enough time for the Plan and Policy Commissioner, time and resources to look about the fourteen issues, I'm sorry, sixteen issues that they had to look at. They've only looked at seven of those sixteen, one of which was the tree canopy issue. And here, we're talking about changing and removing trees further. That's one of the core things that Issaquah is known for, is that tree canopy, so I don't get why we're talking about removing further. This seems to be a whole-scale coding change that keeps the letters, but changes where we didn't want urban development to be. I'm all for urban development in those places where we've designated it to be. This seems outside of that, so my thought is, again, we're not there that this is the best way to accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, sir.
Hi, Jim Corey. I'm a thirteen-month resident of West Highlands Park, so I actually get some local input here. I appreciate you guys coming tonight, too, mostly because I do understand the significance of a sustainable, significant school in the area, and I consider it an asset. The wishes and concerns that I came up with for this location, you talked about walkers, and a lot of walkers that are, they're going to be accessing this location, and I just see those from West Highlands Park and the West Ridge proposed, the West Ridge stuff that's being constructed now. So, I'm not really sure if... So I'm not really sure if we'll have a lot of walking people from outside those areas, just because of the commercial areas that separate that site from the other areas. So I think it's just those two communities. Curious if there's been a road study done. The 13 months that I've been here, we've had one unfamiliar driver in a cement truck overturn right at the intersection where you'd be bringing kids and where buses would be bringing kids in. So that location's a concern for me. And buses are bigger than cement trucks, so a little harder to maneuver. Yeah, the roads and extra traffic. I envision, especially big events, and if it's a sustainable, significant school, there's going to be great community events around there, getting people in and out of there. I think any smart GPS, if anybody's coming from the north, is going to suggest that cars come down Fourth Avenue and Fifth Place, which are actually pretty tight to navigate as it is now. Not sure what they're going to look like after Polygon's done with it, which is really borderline of what they're working on now. So those roads are a concern of mine. I actually drive down that road, and there's kids that are there, and I drive extra slow because they're always there, and I'm concerned. And then just the amount of parking on a site like that. I mean, I'm not envisioning that parking is going to be sufficient. It just sounds like an obvious thing to me. I think anybody that looks at it is going to be like, when a school does that, and you want softball, baseball tournaments, or soccer tournaments, or anything, that that parking bleeds out in the street. If you've tried to park on Fourth Avenue in West Highlands Park after five on a weekday, or basically on a weekend, it's not there. And people get ticketed all the time because the neighbors want their parking. So one suggestion, actually, for that is to maybe work with Swedish, to ask for use of their lot for some overflow parking. Not sure how you discourage people that are from out of the area to not use the community parking, which is taxed already. In the 13 months I've been there, I've had three people park in my reserved spot. I don't call the tow people. I'm a little more neighborly than that, so I go that direction. And then, I'm not sure I got the estimated enrollment of what you were talking about. And then, you talked a lot about how many kids are being transported now, but how many are going to be transported? I'm just throwing questions out. How many would be transported to this location? Something, just thought points. My last one, it is serious, but wondering if the proposed site is 1,000 feet from the pot shop that's down, down the ridge from there? Those are my concerns.
Jim, thank you very much. Jim? Be helpful to get your contact information, because of any follow-up, so. Anyone else desiring to speak? Anyone else? Third and final call. Seeing no one, then, that will conclude a public comment on this agenda bill. And are there questions or discussions? Mary Lou?
I actually have a question for the school superintendent and a question for Trish. Trish first.
Oh, Trish first.
There was a lot of public comment that the council receives through email as well, and I'm wondering how that gets incorporated into the agenda bills so that somebody reading the agenda bill can see all of the information that was submitted.
Right, the information, the public comment that you received at Land and Shore is an exhibit in the updated agenda bill that you would have received for tonight. And then, all that came after the seventh, we're starting another document of all those emails and the public comment, and that would go into the next update.
And when folks ask questions in those emails, how do they get the answers?
Good question, because a lot of the questions are, you know, all over the board. I think we're trying to either answer them in presentations, or we'll go through and try to answer them individually, depending on the comment.
Did you have a question of Ron?
Yeah, but if you...
Stacy, yes.
I have a follow-up to what Mary Lou asked. We have received a fair amount of comment in email. I think it's on, I think a lot of it, the majority of it, is on the code change that Keith was speaking to earlier. So I think, I don't know the answer to that, but I don't know the answer to the question of what do we do with that? Because if they're commenting about a school site, I think a lot of people are commenting actually on the proposed, the code change that PPC had the hearing on.
Right, and those questions, those questions are in the agenda bill for the school, the urban school agenda bill. And we're trying to separate the ones that are actually asking about the annexation and the zoning of that. We're trying to keep them separate, because as Keith said, they're really not, they're similar, but they're not the same. They don't rely on each other.
So I just wanted to point that out, so that maybe we're potentially generous with the inclusion of the comments that we, the comments in this agenda bill, even if there may be duplicates for a future agenda bill having to do with the code change in September.
Okay, so you're saying you want the ones on urban schools in this agenda bill as well?
I'm thinking that we should, I'm suggesting that we look at them with an eye towards, there's a possibility they might be, and someone might be in both.
Okay. The follow-up on that?
Mary Lou?
Sure. So Trish, the information that Keith gave tonight about being able to build the school anyway isn't in the agenda bill. So I'm not sure how the public would know that whether or not there's an urban school standard or not, that this zoning request means that the school could be built anyway under existing code. How does that get included in the agenda?
Right, we can do that. That would be in the urban schools' agenda bill, but we could put an update in this agenda bill as well.
I think that was a pretty big item that came up.
That the process, it's not relying on the urban schools' agenda bill for the school to be built.
I had a question for Ron.
Ron, you're up. Mary Lou?
Not a detailed numbers question, but just on the slide that talked about the trips and the students. I guess what confused me is the numbers seem high. I recognize how many students there are that are moving around, but aren't they on school buses? Why are the numbers in the hundreds when we're talking about saving trips? Is that parents driving kids and picking kids up versus busing?
I believe what I heard Steve say was, it was based off the generation data that was used off of Clark, the most recent.
We had to do a traffic impact analysis for the Clark Elementary.
Talk into the microphone.
We had to do a traffic impact analysis for the New Clark Elementary School. And that determines the number of trips per student in attendance, so it's using that same criteria.
I guess my question is that, is it parents driving their kids to school that we're counting on doing, or is it busing?
It's both.
Okay.
Now, if you look at the number of buses, it's a pretty insignificant number compared to the total.
Right. And I guess, I'll just throw it out there, maybe just as a comment, is that somehow that seems to not follow an urban school sustainable design thing, when the majority of the volume of traffic we're talking about is people driving in cars versus using busing or walking.
That's part of what happens when you have a large attendance area that's remote from the school they attend. Now, if you look at the fact that this site would provide for the ability for a great number of students to walk to school, that changes the picture. There's 72 homes under construction immediately adjacent to the site. There's another 400 on the west side that are coming. There's probably another 100 that are already built. And then you've got the whole Lakeside Properties at the north end that would add to that. So by the time you're done on the west side of Highlands Drive, you're going to come pretty close to filling a school.
I actually just think that'd be an important piece when you're presenting a proposal for the property, is to understand what is car, what is bus, what is walk, would be important.
Mary Lou, I would just add, too, that we do a lot to encourage families to put their children on the bus. Our board recently had a linkage with the city of Sumamish. This was the hot topic as well. I know Grand Ridge Elementary does participate in the metro car pooling program that they try to do. We do have one of the highest bus riderships in the state as well, but it still only represents about 50 percent of our students. So, you know, since I've got this microphone, I want to encourage all parents, if you have a bus available, they're wonderful buses, they're safe, put your children on them. I think it is one way to address our traffic issues. But, again, as you look at that site now, it's maybe hard to envision a predominantly walking school. But as Steve just mentioned, you've got hundreds of more homes and dwellings to be built right adjacent to where that site is at. I don't believe it will ever be all walking. I actually agree that if we have to cut a boundary on the other side of Highlands Drive, we would likely have to bus kids across that busy thoroughfare. So it will not be all walking. And if we have to bring kids from some of the other communities just to the north, at least in the beginning, to populate the school, we would have some bus transit there as well. But certainly, putting a school that close to where all the housing is in our other communities where we have that, in Trossacks and Cloughane, those are, and Grand Ridge for that matter, those are predominantly walking schools.
Thanks.
And it helps to provide capacity at Clark and IVE on the valley floor, which is going to be necessary to accommodate the growth that's coming out of the Central Area Plan.
Hola?
I'm still a little murky on what, if any, decision-making we're doing this evening, because I have both opinions and questions, and I don't know whether to, when and if to share opinions, or whether to just limit myself to questions.
So the proposed motion, which has not been made, is to direct the administration to prepare an ordinance establishing annexation of the King County Island and pre-annexation zoning, consisting of a mixture of various zoning, to include facility CFF zoning as presented in Exhibit D, which is potential future land uses and updated zoning proposals, and which you saw on a slide that... So you're just directing us to prepare the ordinance, and we will return following at September 5th, regular council meeting for a final decision on that. And the purpose of this is to gather public input and questions and concerns on the administration's proposal. Does that help?
It does. Thank you.
Other question?
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on that, this is quasi-judicial, as you know, and you're going to have a second public hearing on September 5th, so no final decision should be made about anything tonight. The only decision, I think, that was put forth in the pack, it was more of a procedural one, as to whether staff should proceed with preparation of an ordinance. But you should not be making decisions and deliberating what the zoning should be since the hearing is not concluded, or at least the second hearing is not concluded. You're required by law to have two public hearings, and this is the first of two.
Bill?
So, follow-up to that question, and, again, process. So this motion here is to direct the administration. Is that going to be voted on today, as is, or that's just, so there's going to be an actual vote on that movement of directing the administration to do, as stated there? There could be actual vote, because it sounded like directing administration. I had a hard time today trying to figure out what exactly we're going to do here, because that is kind of a direct order, and it says the exact type of zoning to be in there. So it seems pretty pre-decisional to me. So I'm not sure what we're going to do next.
From a legal perspective, you cannot make the final decision, and you cannot make a decision on the zoning until after the public hearing is concluded. If you wish to make a procedural determination tonight to direct staff to prepare an ordinance and bring it back, so that you can take action after the next public hearing, that you can do. But making the substantive decision on the zoning itself is something you should not do tonight until after the second public hearing. Is that...
Okay, and just clarify, but it has the zoning listed in there, and I understand what you just said, but to me, it looks like I'm agreeing with the zoning if I voted on that the way it's written tonight. And that's what I have a problem with. So I'm just trying to, as it says, with all these zoning, direct administration to do that. I know it's not official after the second public hearing, but if I vote to direct that, it looks like I'm voting to establish that zoning. So I'm feeling kind of caught in the middle here, because this whole quasi-digital thing is kind of, it's a little awkward here, since we're the developer.
Jim, do you want to?
Developer.
Yeah, perhaps that, you know, that motion was put forth by staff to see if the council wished it to bring back an ordinance at the next meeting. If you don't make a motion directing that, what will happen is that the next meeting, there will just simply be an ordinance, or, excuse me, there will simply be a public hearing, and then we will await direction from the city council after the close of that public hearing, in order to provide direction as to what direction you want to go. But you shouldn't make a decision on the zoning this evening.
Keith, welcome back.
If, thank you. If I could offer maybe a suggestion? It seems like the only public comment that was received this evening was surrounding the parcel that's right now identified as CFF at the northeast corner. And I guess the question is, I hear what you're saying, and you could potentially solve that issue by having an ordinance for both. So basically, the other parcels are, I don't know that there's issues or concerns that I've heard about any of the other parcels. And there's a timeline associated with this, associated with the IC parcel, which I don't think anybody has any concerns over, because that one is associated with the TOD project. And I guess I don't want that to run this timeline, but also, if we don't do the ordinance at the next meeting at the conclusion of the public hearing, and it actually comes two weeks later, I think there's some time issues associated with the TOD project with that delay. So one way to get past that would be to either write the ordinance and leave the, we've created kind of a land use map here, so we could either leave all of them blank and fill them in as part of the conversation at the next, at the close of the public hearing, or we could populate the portions of this in the ordinance that are less controversial. So I don't, I don't know that there's, I think, I hear, I'm trying to get you past the concern that you have by maybe either providing multiple ordinances or leaving the final land uses maybe as a fill-in-the-blank that we could do maybe after the hearing, and the council makes the decision. So, just a suggestion, because you know I have an opinion, right? Sorry, inside joke.
Mary Lou?
Keith, could you stay up for a second?
Sure.
So, isn't it as simple as, we can actually make a motion tonight for, to prepare an ordinance with whatever language we want?
Absolutely.
And vote on that, but it doesn't mean the ordinance passes.
It doesn't.
Can we amend, can we make, it's just to make the ordinance, it's not to vote on it? We could do that tonight.
It's, I don't have any issues with the process. I mean, I've, this is the way that I'm accustomed to seeing it done. This is the way it's typically brought forward. It is directing the administration to prepare an ordinance that will be deliberated on later. That's what the direction is. It's as simple as that. I understand what, the concern, what you think it looks like, or what you feel that, but that's not what, that's not what it is. It's the, it's so that we are prepared to deliberate on September 5th. The other option is to, don't direct the administration to do anything, and then we wouldn't have an ordinance to deliberate over next time.
Hola? Followed by Mary Lou, and then Tola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for those comments, Stacy. You know, having been through an annexation process once before, a couple years ago, I do remember the process. I view what's in front of us as a proposal, and that, as was stated earlier, it'll be at the conclusion of the second hearing on September 5th, where we will actually debate... at the conclusion of the second hearing on September 5th, where we will actually debate and drive toward some type of council, a majority, excuse me, of what the zoning should be by parcel. So this is a proposal. Some of it I agree with, and have no question about. Some I'm uncertain with, I'm uncertain at this time of whether or not I agree. But the process, I think we're going to follow, is bring a proposal forward, continue the public conversation, which is a really good conversation. This is, there's very good points made about forested hillside, schools, density, land use, spillover impact. This is a very good public conversation to have, and I want to continue to have that. And I do accept the driver that we have in terms of timing. We had the benefit at the Land and Shore Committee to see a timeline on the TOD project, and one of the requirements for the funding from King County is that the applicant has control of the land. And establishing this type of zoning is just once, it doesn't, doesn't give them control of the land, but it does, it is a necessary step in that process. And I do, so I accept that timing driving, particularly for that particular parcel, the one in the northwest quadrant, or the bottom left on this diagram. So I'm comfortable, it's a proposal, we will deliberate it, we may change the proposal. And so I'm going to, if no one else does, I am going to feel free to, if I get my computer back, to make a motion to prepare the ordinance. But I think there's going to be some more comments first. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, Mary Lou, Tola.
Sure. I agree with some of that, but I disagree that, while it's a proposal, I actually believe that the council tonight can do what Keith said, which is suggest that a blank be left in a certain spot, or that the community facilities, facilities be listed as community facilities, open space. I have no issue having them bring that back, and during, after this second public hearing, if we decide that there's compelling reasons to do CFF, we will. So I actually, I'm in favor of changing the motion this evening.
Paula?
So, I don't know in regards to annexations, but we often are given a set of options to look at, as I recall with Polygon and some of our other recent options. So it seems like there's sort of, there's sort of two things that we'd want to take a look at, right? One is the option that's in front of us right now, and the other option would be with the two CFFs as CFOS, and then I don't know how the, I don't know how the water tank works, if that CFF is CFOS, and that'd be something the administration would have to come back on. But that seems like the two options we're talking about right now. And so I would suggest a further modification, and rather than just a blank slate, direct the administration and come back with two options that we could look at in detail, and after further public comment, hopefully make a decision between those two options.
I would support that.
Which I think would address Councilmember Ramos's concern.
Stacy?
So I'm unclear, I'm unclear, so two separate ordinances?
No.
Leave two blanks?
No, create two options, an option A and an option B, just like we did with Polygon, and just like we did with Burisma.
Yeah, so, I'll...
I think, I think I've got this figured out, so...
Yeah, I don't have the heartburn that some are expressing about directing the administration to prepare a proposed ordinance, because to me, they're all, they're all blank spots that are filled in with proposals, so that doesn't bother me, but I just want, it doesn't... Whatever you want to do.
Paul?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to direct the administration to prepare an ordinance establishing annexation of King County Island and pre-annexation zoning, consisting of a mixture of intensive commercial, community facilities, open space, and communities, facilities, facilities zoning as presented in Exhibit D, for consideration at the September 5th, 2017 regular council meeting followed, following the scheduled public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I think Stacy...
She beat me.
Beaten by a fraction of a second. So discussion, additional discussion or questions on the motion?
Mary Lou?
Sure, I'm, I'm still struggling. I am not comfortable with this motion at all, for lots of different reasons. One, the biggest one, is I think one of the most shocking memories I have of living in town this time, was when the trees came down for Sequoia Highlands, and that whole ridgeline was exposed, and that is what it is for good now. And I am not sure that we've figured out how to do this right yet, and no argument that we need to have schools, but I would rather have no CFF zoning in here right now, until I understand what those parcels are going to look like. We've made mistakes, and we haven't figured out how to do it better. So I would propose that the, I would like to make a motion to amend that motion, to remove any reference to CFF at this time.
Second.
So there's an amendment to the motion. Questions or discussion on the amendment? Stacy?
I'll, I'm, I'm going to support the amendment, like I said, because it, to me, it doesn't really matter what is in the proposed ordinance, because that makes it, what we're doing here almost makes it look like we're now deliberating. That's the part that troubles me. But by supporting putting CFF in the, in the first motion, or changing this to CFOS, I don't, I think it's, I don't think it matters, but I would support the change if it makes others feel comfortable.
Mariah?
I, I would just echo what Council President Goodman has talked about. I think that we have the opportunity to, to make these changes down the road, but I actually thought that one of the best options that I had heard was from, was from Tola, in terms of presenting two options, an A and a B, and it seemed like that would have the capability to get everyone asked this.
Paul?
I want to make sure I understand the proposed amendment. It says, remove all references to CFF, so that is, so it doesn't replace that with another zoning designation. Is that the intent?
Yep.
Is that your understanding?
My understanding.
Bill?
Yeah, and I'm, I could do this, or I think I might prefer Tola's method a little better, but I could do either. What comes to me, when you have one proposal, you have no alternative, then that's pre-decisional for me. I mean, in all, every environmental document I've ever written, you have to have a no-action alternative. It's required to have at least two. And when you have only one, and it's all, it looks like it's all decided. Whether you say it is or not, that's what it feels like, and that's what I, I cannot support that. I want to support going forward and working on this, keeping our timing on everything, keep it open for looking at schools, but don't have enough information to do that yet. So I could live with this one, or two alternatives, or whatever, but I couldn't go with the original motion.
Tola?
I think Councilmember Barbara was first.
Oh, I'm, sorry, Eileen?
Back here in the local, yeah. I'm also in agreement that I could go with Tola. And it doesn't mean that we can't, even at the next meeting this comes forward, there can still be some changes going forward. So it's not like we're locking ourselves into anything that's being said or, or here this evening. We can change this next councilment meeting when we look forward to this. So I'm not having a problem with anything specific this evening.
So, therefore, I'm going to not support the amendment, and intend to offer an alternate amendment after, if this amendment fails.
Additional discussion on the amendment?
Paul?
On September 5th, we're going to debate parcel by parcel what the zoning should be. That's what it's going to come down to. And I'm sure that this can be prepared in such a way that we can debate, and we can, we can, there can be a, an initial proposal, people can offer amendments. So proceduralize, I think we're making this more complex than we need to. And as the city lawyer said earlier, actually debating, well, I actually want, do want a point of clarification, Jim, you said one of the things we're not doing this evening is debating the zoning. But that sounded a little bit odd to me, because this is actually a different proposal than what we saw at Land and Shore a couple of weeks ago. So if you could clarify that comment, I would appreciate it.
Well, the statement I was trying to make is that you cannot make a final decision on this, and cannot, cannot debate the, the actual issue, underlying issue, what should the zoning be, because you haven't completed the public hearing at this point.
Understood. So this is a, this is a procedural question, and we're not, this is not a question about zoning, this is a question about process only. Okay, thank you.
Additional questions on the amendment? Seeing none, then all those in favor of the amendment to remove all reference to CFF, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the amendment carries. Act Two, the original motion.
I think there were a couple of no votes.
Oh, wait, excuse me. I did that, I think for the consent calendar at the last meeting. All those opposed?
No.
Okay. So the amendment passes by a vote of five to two, with Eileen, or three, one, two, three.
One, two, three.
Okay.
Or to three.
Raise your hand. Okay. I got her.
Okay, good.
So the amendment passes by a vote of four to three. And Paul?
So I think we should be making some decision on September 5th. And again, the, really the conversation about all of the proposed zoning, I do appreciate the public comments we've got this evening. There's different points of view were offered, this is, this is the right conversation to be having. It is, it is, I think, you know, indicative of our times. I value the forested hillside and the view quite a bit. I think it's appropriate to note that, you know, further north of here, that the, that the ridgeline has been, has been cut down. You can see the buildings that are there. So this community needs to have this conversation. I look forward for that continuing, and I'm going to be also expecting to make a final decision on the zoning and the ordinance at our September 5th meeting.
Paula?
So, on, in September, I hope to get to yes. I think there's, I think a second Highland School is desperately needed. I think that the community and homeowners and condo owners have responded to the Highlands hugely, and so I understand why the school district wants to put a school there, and having been involved in several boundary reviews, I understand the appeal of it. I think the city has a longstanding relationship, a strong relationship with the school district, and as long as I've been on council, we've had either yearly or bi-yearly meetings with the school district. And one of the things that we've been talking about for a long time is sort of an urban site design, and trying to design a school that would more reflect the higher density that our community is evolving to, and I'm excited about this potential design. I have to say, though, there's three things that I'm going to need to see in September before I could possibly get to yes. One is, there's this question about landslide zones and the stability of the hillside. I, I think that particular property itself is relatively flat, but I'm going to want to hear back from the city on that question. The second is around the marijuana shop that's in the valley, and its distance from the school, although it's a very steep and forested hillside, but it's still, as one of the people that was involved in crafting that, that policy, it's important to me. And the third, and absolutely most important, is the tree line. And so Richard III, in Shakespeare's Richard III, he said, "A horse, a horse, my kingdom for a horse." And two rows of trees in front of the Highlands right now, north of there, would make such a difference visually. And so when we talked about the remaining forest that would be in the CFOS property, I want to understand what that tree line would look like. Because if it's true that it would do a nice job of, of covering the, the school, that's really important, and that's very, very different for me than expanding the open space that exists to the north of there. And so those are the three things that I'm going to need to understand better when we make a final decision on this ordinance.
Mary Lou?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate again about the ridgeline. I think the clearing of the ridgeline for the Highlands was one of the saddest times around here. It absolutely changed the way town looked, and it used to be you didn't want to look that way coming into town because of the gravel pit, and then it became, they took the whole hillside down, and it was devastating. You know, it feels again like we're being pushed into this tiny little corner because we need to have a school, no doubt, no argument, not a single person here said we didn't need to have a school. But we haven't talked about the fact that we have, God knows what, another thousand units that could be built up there, and 7,000 more that could be built, filled on the floor, and this is going to come up over and over and over again. Again, it just feels like it's at the 11th hour, and instead of being a good decision the community can support, it's, you're going to take down the trees, you're going to build a school. I mean, again, it's a bad, bad place to be. I think since Land and Shore, we've seen this design evolve, and I think this is tied to the urban school design, even though they are in separate ones. I think what breaks my heart most about this is that the first time we're talking about doing a model like this, we have to deforest a piece of land to do it. That is, that's unbelievable to me. Unbelievably sad and short-sighted, and we have four or five more schools to build. What's next? Can't find a place for this one? Where are the other four going to go? I mean, we just, we have not figured this out. I don't think we have worked as closely with the school district as we should have. I don't think we've thought five years down the line, or 10 years down the line. They've got the money, but they can't afford the land, and so we're going to deforest a piece of property. I think that, and this is not an argument about what it should be zoned, no matter what it is zoned, council's hands are not tied to not, to, to a particular design. We can wait and see a design and change the zoning when we want to. So yes, we should make a decision in September, but this is not a do-or-die decision. We need to be way more thoughtful about this, and we need to think about the next four or five schools that are coming. So I, I don't know. I find the whole conversation very disheartening, and we are known for our school district, but we're growing like crazy, and we're not making any plans to accommodate the schools at all. It's pretty disheartening.
Additional discussion or questions on the amended motion?
Paul?
Last comment before the vote, at least for me. It actually has to do with this, that proposed change to the CFF. I know it's not part of the question today, and I would like for the administration's consideration to perhaps create a new designation, CFF school zone or something. Because a change to CFF actually then, and that's why the letter went out to so many people, everybody who was in 300 feet, it was pointed out earlier during public comment, everybody who was in, within 300 feet of a CFF zone got this letter, and it, it had no context, it really, with no backstory. And do we really, as a city, need to change CFF, and maybe should we be considering creating a new zone specifically for schools for this purpose? So that's a, that's a sidebar comment, it's not related to the question in front of us, but I wanted to get it out there.
Thank you. Bill?
And I just want to second that, I'd like to see a separate zone, zoning versus modifying the one, so that would make me more comfortable as we go ahead, so I just want to make sure that's well-heard.
I've heard both Paul and Bill, so it was well-heard. Mariah?
And I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Martz talked about. He asked for three different things that he would like to see coming up in September, and I just want to echo that I would like to see that as well.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor of directing the administration to prepare an ordinance establishing annexation of the King County Island and pre-annexation zoning, consisting of a mixture of intensive commercial, commercial facilities, open space? Let me, let me start over. Direct administration... Direct the administration to prepare an ordinance establishing annexation in the King County and pre-annexation zoning consisting of a mixture of intensive commercial and community facilities, open space for consideration at December, September 5th, 2017, regular council meeting, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to Agenda Bill 7442, annexation of Bellevue Utility Island and establishment of pre-annexation zoning. Perenn zoning element is quasi judicial for the staff setup and background issue. You're on again.
Here's the next one. I think this was a lot easier to think about. This is, hopefully.
Must be, because a lot of, the audience is leaving.
Here's the room. This is implementing part of the water assumption that took place January 1st of this year. This is the site of the Lake Simamish Water Reservoir that we took over from the City of Bellevue. And so now we're able to annex this property into the city limits. We are proposing that the zoning be community facilities, facilities. It already has the water reservoir on it and a beautiful stand of trees around it that are not going anywhere. And it's just a little less than two acres.
Any questions?
Motion first with a question?
Why don't you make a, make a motion and then?
Public hearing first.
Excuse me?
Public hearing first, forward a motion.
Good point.
So, any questions of Trish? Seeing none, then, we will conduct the public hearing, same comments apply, and open the public hearing at 9:14. Is anyone signed up to speak?
No.
Anyone desiring to speak on this issue? Seeing none, then, the public hearing is closed at 9:14 and a half. And questions or discussion?
A motion first? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move to direct the administration to prepare an ordinance establishing annexation of the Bellevue Utility Island and pre-annexation zoning consisting of community facilities, facilities for consideration at the September 5th, 2017, regular council meeting following the scheduled public hearing.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Mary Lou?
Trish, there was a question from, I think it was Connie at the Land and Shore meeting as to what the clearing and grading was in CFFF. And even though there's trees there now, are there any restrictions on the amount of trees that could be removed for future expansion on the site?
Hi there. So my recollection.
Who are you?
So Keith Niven, Director of Development Services and Economic Development, still, temporarily. So my recollection of the question was just a wee bit different, and it was more of a question of operations and how close, what their tree trimming or cutting policy is around city facilities with kind of implication that maybe the city took a harder stance at maybe volunteer trees around community facilities and that maybe this reservoir was going to receive similar attention. So I have not had a chance to connect yet with Brett Heath. We've exchanged phone messages. I will get that answer and get that out to you all before we get to September.
Thanks.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. How's everyone doing?
Let's take five.
We're going to take five. Please be back in your seat at 20 minutes after nine.
It's okay. Oh, God. We have to move on.
We are back after a short recess. Our next item this evening is Agenda Bill 7345, amending parking requirements in the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards. And to kick things off, Lucy Sloman from Development Services Division for the introduction.
All right. Sorry, we're having a little technical problem.
Do you want to begin?
No, it's the notes.
Oh.
What about them?
You don't want them or you want them?
I don't want it like that. Sorry. All right. Yeah, I don't even know how to.
While we're overcoming the technical difficulties, I just a reminder that July 27th, the city will be celebrating its 125th anniversary at Confluence Park. It promises to be an enjoyable and exciting evening with a very few speeches, a band, lots of activities for kids, food trucks, and promises to be a fun evening celebrating our new Confluence Park improvements. And with that, Lucy, are you ready?
Yes, I will be speaking without notes, so that'll be interesting. So this evening, Lucy Sloman, Land Development Manager from DSD, and Chris Brayland from Farron Peers are here to both give you a summary and some background as we're attempting to conclude the first of the moratorium work plan items. So just as a sort of item history to kind of give a summary of the work we've done, about a year ago, we did the Central Issaquah evaluation, which showed that seven projects, residential projects, all had structured parking, but almost none of the non-residential projects had structured parking. Moratorium was approved on September 6th last year. Parking was one of the moratorium work plan items. In the resulting RFQ, we asked two questions: is Issaquah right parked or not, and should structured parking be required? A consultant team was hired in March this year. It was Farron Peers with Echo Northwest as a subconsultant. On June 7th, we had presented to Land and Shore recommending that the parking standards be unchanged and implement a structured parking requirement. That was supported by Land and Shore, so we proceeded to take proposed code changes to PPC and then on to Land and Shore.
I want to get closer.
So at this point, what we're going to do is now take a step back and kind of run through the background material that got us to the point where we're bringing forward something for approval for you tonight, primarily for the public and the council members who haven't had a chance to hear this research.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Butler and the council. Again, my name is Chris Brayland. I'm a principal at Farron Peers in Seattle, and we were hired to evaluate the parking moratorium work item. And so I'm going to step through this at a pretty high level. I'd be happy to answer questions since we're going at a pretty high level. The main question that Lucy mentioned that we were slated to ask was, is Issaquah right parked principally from the lens of multifamily parking? And this is somewhat of an outcome of the developments that have come online in Central Issaquah and the perceived parking issues related to those. And to answer that question, our firm and myself personally had been involved with right-size parking. This is an effort led by King County Metro, which they were asking a similar question on a countywide basis. And we've been looking at this data for a number of years and for a number of different communities, and we sort of have been advancing that along. So to do the analysis here in Central Issaquah, we looked at the right-size parking database from 2012, 2017. We did some field visits in Issaquah, in the Central Issaquah area, as part of this work plan earlier this spring. And we also looked at parking regulations in other cities, just to sort of get a sense as to how does Issaquah stack up with its current sort of peer cities and also where Central Issaquah is heading? How does it look compared to areas that are denser and more urban than Central Issaquah is today? So you can ask me points on any part of that data. The core of our work looked at right-size parking, which is field-collected data. In other words, King County Metro works with property developers to get permission to go onsite and see what the actual parking utilization is. They do this in the middle of the night. They pay college students in pizza to basically look through the parking lots and garages to see how many vehicles there are per occupied dwelling units, that we're making an apples-to-apples comparison. In 2014, 240 sites across the county were surveyed, three of which were in Issaquah. They're currently doing a new update to this. And as part of that, Lucy managed to work with Brian Manford over at King County Metro to make sure that we got three new sites in Issaquah, one of which is in Central Issaquah, the other two up in the Highlands. This is just an example of the 2012 data that we were particularly focused on, mostly on the east side and in some suburban centers. There were 71 sites that we looked at closely for this piece. The 2017 data that we spent some time digging through is shown here on the screen. And the point being here that the sites there are shown in terms of the number of units. The chart there to the right of, say, Site 1 says 344 units, 54% of which are currently occupied. So again, we're looking at the occupied units and how much parking there is. There are 396 parking stalls in that development that were constructed, 169 of which were occupied at the time of the survey. So slightly lower parking occupancy than there is unit occupancy, pretty common phenomenon everywhere you go in the county. And the parking ratio is there at .9 parking stalls per occupied dwelling unit. And you can see for the other stall sites that we looked at were around 1.14 stalls per occupied dwelling. And this background data was then compared against the parking code in Central Issaquah. In addition to that 2017 data that King County collected, we went out on the week they were collecting the data, just to make sure everything looked pretty typical at the site. So we're out at night, did some field observations. Couple of things to note, while the parking lot was not heavily used, almost every single on-street stall around the Atlas Apartments complex was utilized. And we can conveniently sort of spot who's using that, if they're an Atlas resident or not, because they're given a hang tag, and we can confirm essentially who's there. And should we be taking questions now, or what's the procedure here?
Yeah, so I have a question. So when you're looking at this, like Atlas charges for parking, and they're, you know, half-full now, so there's plenty of street parking, and everybody's using that versus paying for parking, I'm assuming. So it kind of gets, as they fill up occupancy, that might change, I would imagine.
So we did talk to them about that. Atlas is a somewhat unique situation where they have free surface parking, and you get granted access to that with those hang tags. Or you can pay to purchase a spot in the underground garages, is what we had an interview with the property manager there at the time. One thing that I would keep in mind is that when we've looked at the sites across the county, whether or not the parking costs money to lease the parking space or not does have an effect on utilization, but it's not quite as strong as we actually thought it would be initially. So there is a relationship there, but in Atlas, a lot of those folks have the option to not pay and park onsite, or to pay and park onsite, but still, a lot of people are choosing to park on-street because it is generally the most convenient place to park. It's closer to their door. They can see if it's there or not. They don't have to circle around through the lot to see if that spot is open. If they see a spot on the street, they're just going to grab it. That's pretty typical of how a lot of people park. So again, what we saw here was that the most convenient parking is used first. It doesn't sound like rocket science, but a lot of times, it's surprising when you actually see it in action, which is the on-street spaces that get used first. And all these pieces that we saw were confirmed with the interview with the property manager that they would like to have more people park in the garage, but they don't because it's on-street is available. And even their free onsite parking is not utilized, and they confirm that even though they would, again, prefer people to park on the site. I have information on, an audit essentially, of what we looked at for a few in-progress projects that are in the development review stage right now, and what their ratios look like, and whether or not they're providing an appropriate amount of parking. I'd be happy to get into if you'd like. But given the time, I thought I'd sort of just go to the conclusions here, that in our opinion, the parking minimums for residential parking within Central Issaquah are generally appropriate. In other words, that they're in that Goldilocks zone of parking where it's not too much parking, which drives up the cost of housing, and it's not too little, which results in spillover parking and so there are other undesirable effects. In general, developers are building just a bit more than the minimum parking requirements for residential developments. Again, that's fairly typical across the county. People often park just a little bit over that, and that's a lot of times, the minimums are somewhat calibrated to the demand. Developers would much rather provide a little bit more parking than risk not having an apartment get leased up. So there's a strong financial incentive for them to provide just over the minimum parking. Parking spillover risks in Central Issaquah are lower than what we often see when we do these sorts of studies, and we've done them all over the county. And that has a lot to do with sort of the geography of Central Issaquah being set lower topographically than a lot of the surrounding neighborhoods. There are a few areas where it does touch. And the freeways and other large roads that sort of make it harder for parking spillover to creep into the most sensitive areas that are concerned about parking spillover. So because of that, we don't really recommend any changes to the parking minimums, nor do we recommend, there was a question that we got asked sort of along the way here, should there be higher minimums around the edge of Central Issaquah? We also do not think that's appropriate. In some interviews that we had with the developer and talking with other developers on unrelated projects, if you lowered the minimums, you could incentivize shared parking more readily than is currently done. And I can get into, there's a whole bunch of caveats around that. But if you don't provide a reason for people to share, and they have to build the parking onsite, they tend to not take advantage of the retail parking across the street, because they have to build it anyway, and they're going to build it at about the minimum. So there has to be a stronger incentive if we want to see sharing between, say, commercial and residential uses. And as Central Issaquah grows, the on-street parking demand is guaranteed to grow from multifamily projects regardless of how they're parked, because that's the most convenient parking that will be available, and people will use that unless there's some other regulations in place to prevent that. So I'll transition over to Lucy.
Well, do you want to ask questions now of this part of the research? Or wait till the end?
Paul? Could you flip back to the previous slide real quickly, and just tell us what the minimum is? And when you say developers are building more than the minimum, what is the, what are they building? What's the average?
Well, the minimum, maybe Lucy chime in a little bit, it's not completely straightforward because there are, it's, I think nominally, one unit per dwelling, or excuse me, one parking stall per dwelling unit, correct me if I'm wrong. But there are some ways to tick that down through a variety of, if you provide electric vehicle spaces, there's ways to move that down. What we did see for the Vale and Inniswood projects is that the developers are building around 10%, 5% to 10% more than the minimum requirement, because that's where they see the market demand is today. Almost every developer that we've talked to, and if you look over the past 20 years, the trend has been for a slight decrease in amount of parking demanded per unit per year across the county, as people choose to own slightly fewer cars and family sizes are a little bit smaller. So a lot of folks build for today, expecting that they're going to have some vacant spaces in the future.
Thank you.
Other questions at this time? Take your off the hook.
So I'm going to give a streamlined version of the presentation that was given to Land and Shore by Eco Northwest. So this question is tied to a requirement for structured parking, but the important thing to remember about structured parking is it's not just about parking. Partly, it's about urban form and urban design, which is why this has come up. It's how we use our land. Are we using it efficiently? And those questions impact other moratorium work plan items, so it's good that this one's coming through first. In another way, parking drives everything from an economic perspective, which is that generally, the way parking works, especially in suburban areas, the primary use, residential, office, retail, et cetera, has to subsidize the parking, especially if it's structured, which can be quite expensive. So there's a desire to try and be as efficient as possible, especially in a community like Issaquah where land is becoming quite valuable. The market is pivoting away from suburban building and large lots to urban, more structured parking with more density, and that trend appears to be continuing. So the question is, what we can do to push to make it either more parking, more structured parking, or to ensure that it's done even beyond what the market would do for itself? What Eco Northwest did was look at different uses and different construction types and see where, how that impacted feasibility. Some of the things to keep in mind is that for the construction type, it's not only about the building itself, but about the parking. So when you have a stick-built townhome, its structured parking is around $7,000 a stall. When it's concrete, it's $35,000 a stall. And if it's underground, it's $50,000 a stall, which goes up even more when you're dealing with the high-water tables such as we have in Issaquah. So all of these tested different rates, and what they were seeing, and you know, the low cost of, for instance, stick-built structured parking, you can see being indicated because the tuck-under stick-built townhomes could have 100% structured parking, and that would be economically feasible. When you get into the concrete parking of the other three scenarios, which is residential podium construction, retail with a separate structure, or office with a separate structure, you can see that between 25% and 50% is where they move from feasible to infeasible. In Morgan's presentation, and I think because of its relevance to our discussions as this has evolved, some of the things that he pointed out specifically related to retail is that right now, it is very auto-oriented and very auto-reliant, and that as we try and encourage it to move towards structured parking, a certain economy of scale is necessary. Small individual retail can't functionally or financially make it work, so there's this certain minimum size that it has to get to to be successful. The implications and kind of conclusion of this is that, you know, our vision in Central Issaquah is for structured parking, and that's the community's expectations, which is, of course, why we're working on this, that structured parking has to address parking minimums, but also urban design in the marketplace. So there are just a number of factors that are getting folded into this. Some flexibility is necessary and appropriate because there are variations in site configurations and site constraints, like high-water tables, slopes, soils, all those various factors that we've discussed. And obviously, differences in construction costs and techniques, depending the kind of use, the height, the density. And so it's difficult to come up with a perfect percentage. We're seeing a signal from the market that structured parking is appropriate, and yet we're trying to set it at a level where the market will not retreat from building in this community. And so we've tested this, the tolerance, through both projects and the model. So after that presentation, we went through a series of recommendations. So I tried to reformat some of the information I've given you before to make it a little easier to see. So we looked at three primary uses: office, residential, and retail. How much should be required to be in a structure? How much parking should be required in a structure? And what's the minimum building size or threshold at which that would apply? That evolved, going from the administration recommendation to PPC, from PPC to Land and Shore, and from Land and Shore to council. I've highlighted, the ones in yellow are where changes took place from the previous recommendation. PPC recommended moving to 50% for both office and residential, and Land and Shore recommended moving to 50% for retail with a minimum threshold of 25,000 square feet. So let's look at some of the bases that we used to arrive at some of these numbers. From Eco Northwest, you know, we talked about this, this is just a summary of the information that I presented, that generally between 25% and 50% is where we move from feasible to infeasible. But there are other kind of goals that we're trying to achieve, or policy decisions that we discuss. The administration's original recommendation was fairly conservative, to try and avoid negative consequences, while also communicating to the builders and developers that we wanted this to be a part of our community. And PPC said no, and the residents that spoke at PPC said no, that they thought we should be making a larger step and something more aspirational. So our original recommendation matched the median of all the research that staff had done, while PPC was more at the average of the structured parking research that we had done within the community. This helped us focus in between the polls of 25% and 50% that Eco Northwest had presented. I do want to point out that in making this step, we are going to be leaders, and I know that's an important thing for us. It does mean, though, that we are using the research that we have, both that the staff and Eco Northwest has performed, and we don't have other models within the community to look at. We shared the research that, or the description that Mike Brennan provided to us. I did check back with Federal Way. My understanding is that they have adopted a 25% requirement for residential projects over 100 units. All the other communities that were included in Eco Northwest's report were using incentives for structured parking or credits for on-street parking, and the incentives were related to density and height bonuses. But we're not really seeing other communities using requirements. So I'm not saying that as a disincentive for the actions that we're taking. I'm simply saying that being on the leading edge is challenging because we don't have other models to look at.
Lucy?
There were a couple other proposed changes.
Oh, thank you. You mean the handout that you got this evening?
No, like definitions in the, that's being proposed, like.
You mean in the edit, the full, okay. So there, yes, the full range of edits that were proposed included some changes to definitions. We were trying to make sure that the definition of structured parking, what counted, what didn't count, was clear. So for instance, carports would not count, other kinds of structures would count. Another important point to draw attention to is that based on conversations with, primarily with the council, there are not exceptions and adjustments included as part of this. So for instance, schools are not left out, affordable housing are not left out. We felt that if this was an important part of the community, it would be important to include them in the same way. We're already seeing the school district using parking decks, so proposing parking decks as several of their projects, so we don't anticipate this being an issue for them. And then the handout that Tisha gave you, and we have some for the public if people are interested, was, Tisha actually read what we wrote and noticed an inconsistency in a piece of language, one of the intent statements, and we've corrected it in the piece of material that you received.
Hola?
Can you go back to the slide that showed administrative? There we go. So the language that's in the agenda bill in front of us, which would it result in? Which column?
It is the Land and Shore recommendation.
Thank you.
And so if the Land and Shore recommendation is moved tonight, does that require an additional public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, it's my opinion that it does. This is an issue that, as I understand it, the requirements which Land and Shore is suggesting were not among the range of alternatives that were considered by the PPC. And because that's the case, in order to consider that recommendation, the council would have to hold its own public hearing in order to consider that.
Thank you. Hola?
Was the Land and Shore decision unanimous?
That's, yes.
Yeah. There's no questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion, and we'll see what happens.
Okay.
I move to adopt an ordinance number 2799. Adopting by reference amendments to the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards, including clarifying the administrative adjustment of standards, the definition of parking structure and carport, and requiring structured parking for new residential uses, office uses above 5,000 gross square feet, and retail uses above 25,000 gross square feet.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mary Lou?
I have a comment and maybe ask for clarification. The comment is that the background work that was done by the consulting firms and staff was really detailed, a lot of data that really supported the conclusions and recommendations you made. The one piece... The one piece, maybe you want to clarify a bit, Lucy, is the retail piece. There was a difference between land and shore and staff and planning policy, and I, if you can clarify what that was, and I have a comment about why, why at least land and shore supported the change.
So are you asking why?
Why staff recommended zero, and then what condition and policy said would apply to that zero?
Oh, it's at the bottom of the slide, that Planning Policy Commission, Committee, Commission, sorry, was interested. Some of the members were ready to put a square footage or a percentage on retail. Others felt like there wasn't enough information, and so they recommended staff come back. They asked that staff come back and do, after they've done further research. Staff's intention, if they were going to proceed with that, was to hold a joint meeting of PPC, EVC, and potentially with a retail consultant.
And I guess the question for that was then, if land and shore is recommending to council to do something different, does the meeting still occur? And is there still the potential that a year from now we could actually be coming back and revisiting the 25,000 square foot number?
We certainly could. I don't know, I don't know if since, if I'm tracking what you're asking me, the, if council chooses to adopt land and shore's recommendation, I don't know that we would need to do that. On the other hand, that doesn't mean that we wouldn't choose to hire a consultant and do more research because that was certainly part of the land and shore discussion.
That's something staff would decide before budget, whether or not to pursue that, depending on what we vote on this evening.
I'm not sure it's a staff decision. It is something that we could discuss with the administration.
Paul?
Thank you. Lucy, the 25,000 square feet, clearly the administration was uncomfortable with that at land and shore. I came away with the impression that maybe you were going to take another look and do, have a few more conversations. And then when it came back in front of us, as it is this evening, maybe you'd have some additional commentary on the 25,000 square feet. Like, do you have anything like that? Or is there anything additional you want to share with the council? So first of all, I did watch the PPC meeting. I was, I'm aware of the conversation that happened there. I know how it got to the recommendation, hey, study it and come back. It was land and shore. We said, hey, put 25,000. You guys were clearly uncomfortable with that. I'm just wondering if you have anything to, any more to share with the council this evening about your feeling about 25,000?
Well, I would say that 20, so 25,000 was in the, was the basis of the work that Eco Northwest did when they ran their model. So beyond that, I will defer to the Economic Development Director.
So the conversation that we had at land and shore was that a lot of, so, so Eco Northwest did some modeling, and basically they ran a couple model runs and saw, you know, at this level it was fine, at this level it broke. But it really, there was really not a lot of resources spent on trying to dial that down to an exact number. So we spent a lot of time looking at the projects that had been built recently, and there's been quite a few commercial, like office and residential projects for us to pull from, and as Lucy mentioned earlier, to determine those market tolerances. You know, when it came to retail, you know, what we could find in the marketplace is really big projects have structured parking. So things like Bell Square, any of the malls, Grand Ridge Plaza. Anything that's smaller is really generally not going to have structured parking. And so as we talked about that, you know, the number that was picked by land and shore, the 25,000 square feet, that's a big retail building. That one, you know, I think where we're sitting is, how many of those are we going to have in our community? I think part of why the administration didn't provide additional analysis here is because the intent of land and shore was not fully understood. So where we are is if, if the council really does not want surface parking to happen with new buildings, and we have to include something for retail, you know, getting that, that threshold of if there is, if the project is a certain size, you know, it's a harder, it's a harder, it's a harder metric to pick because there aren't examples out there that we feel comfortable knowing what that will do to our retail market, frankly. So it's why if, if, if the council wants a better number than the 25,000 square feet, it's probably resources beyond what we have within our administration to give you that information. That was a really long answer. Sorry.
Thank you. Stacy?
Can you give an example of a 25,000 square foot building in the community that we have now?
I did a little research, yeah. So there we are. Staples is about 27,000 square feet, and PetSmart over in Pickering is about 25,000 square feet. So those are two examples.
I don't know what the intent of the other two members of land and shore, what their intents were. Mine were just concerns about losing opportunities if we don't require any structured parking for retail. Otherwise, we, it's not required, very expensive, not going to get it. So it's possible to start off with a number and maybe have that reviewed over the next year.
Other, other questions or discussion? Paul?
Thank you for that comment, Stacy. And the point of my question was that it's somewhat, it's somewhat of a guess. And I agree with Stacy that we should do something, but this is not a very exact science. So to me, my intent in supporting this going forward would include that this is something that we're, we need to watch carefully. It should become part of our regular report out, whether it be at the dashboard level or activity citywide or within the central area. You know, let's watch this closely because this is not a real scientific number. But I agree with Stacy in that it's doing some, it's, it's worth putting a minimum in there because the downside is also something we don't want. And that would be development that just did surface parking, and then that's very hard to undo.
Mariah?
I just had a question about whether the 25% for retail was, was discussed. Okay, because I, it just seems like we're going all the way from zero to 50, and if the 25% was feasible, I just wanted to see if there was a discussion surrounding that.
I don't remember.
Maybe.
You can actually comment if you want. My recollection from the committee meeting was that staff presented all of the data and landed on what they considered to be a conservative number, and the committee decided to not be conservative, to actually be more aggressive in acquiring it. And so went with something that was within the range, but at the higher end of the range. And the staff recommendation was at the lower end of the range. But we talked about it quite a bit.
Okay.
Other questions or discussion?
Question about the ordinance?
Yeah, well, I have a different question. Go ahead.
The update to the ordinance today was to just correct the language that Tisha had seen in the agenda bill that was different than the ordinance? Okay.
No substantive change, that's... Stacy?
So then back to the comment that Jim Haney had earlier. If the, if the council were to adopt the 25,000 square foot retail, what's the next, then what is required to happen? Or do we have to send it back before we vote on it? I guess that's it.
That, that is my recommendation. Let me, well, let me, let me explain my, my earlier statement. When you are going to change a recommendation that has been made after the PPC has held its public hearing, when you are going to change the regulation, if the regulation changes significantly, you need to hold an additional public hearing prior to making the change. If the change which you're proposing to make was within the range of the alternatives which were considered by the PPC, then you can make the change without holding an additional public hearing. My understanding from Keith is that the 25,000 square feet and the idea of applying a 50% structured parking to retail uses above 25,000 square feet was not one of the alternatives considered by the PPC. Therefore, in order to make your consideration of that change valid, you need, you would need to hold an additional public hearing prior to adopting that change. So just to make, I hope I'm being clear about that, but that's what the GMA requires.
I think you misspoke, and you said 50%. We were considered, we are proposing here 25%.
Yes.
50?
It's, the, the land and shore committee recommendation was 50 at 25,000 square feet.
Mine, okay.
So...
Stacy?
So this would be the first, on the first, on the list of tasks to be completed regarding the moratorium. Be careful what I say because it doesn't mean that we have to do all of them. But, so I don't, I don't know what, I would, I'm guessing we're not going to lift the moratorium or entertain that. I'm just guessing, based on adopting just the new parking proposal. But, so really my question is, do we have time then to go back to PPC for a hearing and come back in a timely manner, say in September?
I heard Jim say that you could hold the hearing here at council. I don't know that you have to go back to PPC.
Oh, sorry, I thought that's what we were...
No, you could, you could hold the hearing here at council if you wish to do that. All that's required is a public hearing prior to making the change.
So we can make a motion to direct the administration to have a, organize a hearing for us, right? Okay.
So there is a motion on the floor. So the way to do that, I believe, would be by an amendment.
The motion?
A motion or a substitute motion.
Yeah, I was going to ask if I can withdraw.
You can.
Need a second?
Second or...
So I'm going to make a second motion then. Move to schedule a public hearing for, what date would that be?
August 7th is our next regular council meeting.
August 7th?
Sure. We don't know if...
This provides our, this provides our notice, doing it in the meeting. So it, our newspaper publication notice would be shorter than, than is our, than is our practice. But because we're setting the hearing at a public meeting... So we wouldn't be able to meet our conservative publication. So we could meet, we could notice the hearing a week in advance in the newspaper. Our practice is to provide two-week advance notice. So that would, if August 7th wasn't a possibility, the next hearing option would be September 5th. Just to note that the moratorium public hearing will be held on August 7th to consider extension or modification.
So in terms of noticing, I have to look to clerks and legal to tell me what date to suggest in the motion?
My suggestion would be September 5th because that enables the full publication of the notice.
Okay. Start again. Move to schedule a public hearing for September 5th, 2017 in order to consider the recommendation of the land and shore committee to require that retail uses above 25,000 square feet provide 50% of parking as structured parking.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion?
A question, Mr. Mayor? Does that mean that the public hearing and the vote would occur on the same night?
Good. Hola?
I'm going to again talk about what it would take to get me to yes on this because I'm not at yes right now. And here's what my, here's what I want to understand. I feel that pretty much since the moratorium was enacted, we've seen a snowballing of concern about housing prices in the, in the, on the east side of King County. And I'm a little concerned about mechanisms that induce an increased price on residential property in Issaquah, knowing how hard it is to, to, you know, come up with affordable housing. So what I want to understand is what this gets us. At the end of the day, if I look at the valley and I think about where the valley is today, I think we've talked about something like three-quarters of the property, three-quarters of the land area is parking in the valley, or three-quarters of the impervious maybe is parking. So I would, it will help me to consider doing this if on the 5th of September I have some idea of what the impact of going with the land and shore recommendation is compared to the baseline. I realize that's a lot to ask, but I'm telling you what would make me, make it an easier decision for me because I'm so sensitive right now to the incredible escalation of prices and the concerns that the King County area is just experiencing. You know, I'm worried that 10 years from now we'll be as expensive as San Francisco, and I don't, I don't want to see that happening. So I want to understand the benefit that I would get from inducing this, this extra fee on, on development. Thanks.
Other comments or questions? I have just learned that if the public notice is submitted tonight, which is possible, we can make the August 8th.
So would you like me to amend the motion?
Get your information by then.
I've said the information that I would like to know to be comfortable with a yes, regardless of the date.
Yeah, so I'd like to amend the motion to switch the date from September 5th to August 7th, 2017.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the amendment. Being done then, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. And now back to the original motion. Any additional discussion on the original motion? Being done then, all those in favor of the original, the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to our final item under Regular Business, Agenda Bill 7407, Citizen Service Results. Emily Moon, Deputy Administrator, for the staff presentation.
Good evening.
Welcome back from vacation.
Thank you.
All right. Last but not least, this is the fun stuff. All right. I am very happy to be here to talk about our second edition of our National Citizen Survey. And before I launch into the results and how we conducted the survey, I just want to say thanks. Thanks for authorizing us to conduct the survey for a second time. I also want to say thank you to community members that participated. It's incredibly valuable feedback for us, so I want to make sure that we express that gratitude. First and foremost, I also want to say that the survey results continue to demonstrate a high level of satisfaction with and pride in our community. So, organizations that are focused on continuous improvement and the delivery of high-quality services aren't afraid to ask questions and to dive a little bit deeper into how they're doing. And our city's mission and value statement emphasizes that approach to public engagement, communication, and service excellence. So, the survey is just another avenue for us to connect with our community and one of the ways, one of the many ways that we measure how we're doing. And a, a great way to better understand our customers' needs and desires. So, this was the second time we conducted the National Citizen Survey, which is a survey instrument at the National Research Center and is endorsed by the International City and County Management Association. 3,000 households were randomly selected. That was a bigger sampling than in 2014. And this year, we had option to complete the survey either on paper or online. And then, in addition to that, we had a new option that opened up the survey instrument and a separate online link to anyone in the community who wanted to participate. And we kept those data sets separate, the kind of scientific survey selection and then the opt-in option online. Seven, we also broke the information down into seven geographic subgroups and the online opt-in version was available for two weeks. So, survey methodology didn't change. Send out a postcard, hey, you've been the lucky one. You've been chosen. Watch for your paper copy of the survey instrument. And then, those households had three weeks to complete it, or, I'm sorry, had six weeks to respond. We use a method called the birthday method just to try to get a better random sampling within the household, so we asked the person that had the most recent birthday to complete the survey and hopefully that balances out male, female, age, all of that. And then, we wait the results according to U.S. Census data. Don't know responses were recorded. You may have seen that in the appendices, but they're not included in the table and charts of responses in the reports that you got from NCS, so I want to make sure that that's understood. We had a great response rate in our survey. 25% is a very, very good response rate for a mailed survey instrument. That is just a percentage higher than we had in 2014. And we had 251 participants in the non-scientific opt-in online survey. And that's a great first attempt to get participation in our online survey. So, we had a grand total of 991 survey participants. And again, we have those online results in a separate report in your packet. The response rates varied by geography, so some areas had a 22 response rate and some were as high as 34% response rate. That's important to understand. It's also important to know that ev, the minimum response rate that we saw in a particular geography increased significantly this year over 2014. We had as low as 12% participation in one of our areas in 2014. Also, it's important to understand margin of error varies on each question. It also varies as you whittle down what your comparison group is. So, if you're just looking at a smaller geography, your margin of error will go up. All right. The questions on the survey are grouped roughly into these three categories. In addition, we, we do always have the opportunity to ask customized questions. This year, we asked questions to help our efforts with the Parks Plan, our PROS 2, and also some questions about our neighborhood engagement program. We continue to ask a custom question about sources, sources of information and that helps us just to track trends. So, we asked questions about these major themes in our community. These are attributes of livability, community characteristics, governance, and participation. And community engagement, I just want to focus on that for a second because the terminology that National Citizen Survey uses for community engagement is a li, little different than how we talk about it as a community. And so, here on the survey instrument, that included things like participation in social events, opportunities to volunteer, and how, how people felt about the neigh, the neighborhood connections that they have in the community. So, it's a little different than, I think traditionally, we think about that's, how does a city engage residents? This is much broader than that. As we did in 2014, we compared to national benchmarks. There were over 400 in our data set. And this year, we also asked NRC to give us regional comparisons. They picked 20 communities and on the west coast that had similar household incomes and were in metropolitan areas that we concurred would be good fits. And we get a lot of great data looking at those benchmarks. The survey produces a ton of data. It takes quite a bit of time to sort of synthesize it, pull out the pieces that are most meaningful. But here's one that, that at a glance helps us to understand how our community compares to others and helps us understand whether we're just in the ballpark of what the norm is. So, overall quality of life is a very good indicator of the overall health of our community. And I'm happy to say again, was rated very favorably. 90% of our respondents rated overall quality of life in Issaquah as excellent or good. We often call that combined score the positive score, so you'll hear me use that term. And 92% of our residents rated Issaquah as an excellent or good place to live. This chart breaks down some of the questions that were asked about quality of life, overall quality of life. Approximately nine out of 10 residents gave positive ratings to their neighborhoods. The city is a place to raise children. Issaquah's overall appearance, the city's cleanliness, air quality, feelings of safety, and K through 12 education. Here's a few that I put on this chart. I also wanted to give you an indication of how they relate to the national benchmark. So, the up arrow means we were higher. If it's left to right arrow, it means we were similar. These were stable trends too, from 2014 to 2017. Overall, yeah.
The comparison here is to our previous 2014 or to the, across the national?
It's comparison to the national benchmark.
Thank you.
Right. But, when I said that they were stable trends, it means wherever you see an up arrow, it was, it was up last time too. We were also higher in 2014. So, of the 134 items that we asked our survey respondents to rate, this year, 105 of those items were rated similarly to 2014. 24 got lower marks than they did in the previous survey. Most of those were in the categories dealing with development, housing, mobility, cost of living, and trust. And five were increased over 2014. Those were around engagement, participation, health, and wellness. We asked respondents to state the most important focus areas for the city for the next two years and, and they're given choices. They named safety, mobility, and the natural environment as the three that the city should focus on in the next two years. Overall, residents gave ratings that were positive in each of these categories and similar to other communities. On safety, the city got very positive ratings for overall safety, safety in respondents' neighborhoods, safety in Issaquah's downtown and commercial areas. In natural environment, city residents continued to rate features in the natural environment category very highly. This included the overall quality of the natural environment, the cleanliness of Issaquah, air quality in the city. In one of our custom questions, we also asked some feedback on priorities for parks and 62% of residents said that Issaquah Parks, Trails, and Open Space were essential to the quality of life in our community and 34% said these attributes were very important. They also expressed a high level of support for environmental stewardship and protection. Mobility was a mixed bag. Traffic flow, overall ease of travel, travel by car were all rated lower than in national benchmark, but similar to the regional benchmark. So, you can extrapolate west coast cities. A lot of them are growing and experiencing the same sort of difficulties that we are. The exception to this is that our overall traffic flow rating was lower than the regional benchmark. Other aspects, though, in this mixed bag category like paths and walking trails, bus and transit services, and the use of alternative transportation and carpooling had favorable ratings and were all higher than the benchmarks. Survey also asked residents to assess how well the city government does in meeting their needs and expectations. And more than eight in 10 participants gave positive ratings for their overall quality of city services and the city's customer service. We asked specific questions about the quality of city services and more generically governmental or public services. And survey respondents rated over 30 of these types of services and amenities. Bus or transit service, yard waste pickup, health services, wellness, K through 12 education, overall economic health, and storm drainage were rated higher than the national benchmark. There were some slight changes in, in this list from 2014 and I can answer those questions if you have them now or later. These were the ratings, the services and amenities that had lower ratings than in 2014. The one that stood out to me was street repair. And I think it's really, really important, and I tested this with NRC. We posed our survey at a different time of year than we did in 2014 and that does tend to make a difference. It's, that's been my experience, it's been theirs. So, we actually asked these questions before we did our annual pavement program and we had, we had a difficult winter. So, that's one that we'll continue to watch to see if we get a trend there. General governance, approximately half of the city's scores were lower this year in this category than in 2014. However, all of the general governance scores were rated similarly to the national and regional benchmarks. While I find these lower scores to be disappointing, at least, and while I know we're committed to continuing to analyze those, we don't get a lot of information about why people felt the way that they did and why they answered these questions the way that they did on the survey and what action we might be able to take to correct that course. So, it's, it's also important to note that NRC has told us that this trend mimics what they see in other communities, usually around post-election, major election or a significant change, which we did have. And so, I'm, I'm trying to balance our, our data input on this with that finding. They said a more, a better, more productive question to pose when you get results like this is, were there any results that we weren't expecting? And that's what I'm posing to staff now. What do you see in here that were, was a surprise to you? And let's have a conversation about that. Also, we have two years worth of data, so two data points don't necessarily make a trend. So, we'll want to watch that in a future year. So, in the section about participation and engagement, we capture residents' opinions about social connectivity, community participation and the results. This year, again, were mixed in this category. So, in some areas such as stockpiling supplies for emergencies, using public transportation and carpools, or recycling at home, our residents are participating at higher levels than the national benchmark. There are other places, though, where we are lower than the regional or national benchmark. Those categories changed a little bit from 2014 as well. Participation statistics also revealed that residents had spent more time in this past 12 months campaigning for an issue or a candidate. No surprise there. That they'd done a favor for a neighbor, attended a local public meeting, watched a local public meeting. And Issaquah residents tend to do these things at levels that are similar to residents nationwide and in our regional comparison group. This was one place where we saw some significant changes when we compared to our last survey. More people are now turning to electronic media sources, social media sources for information instead of local media. I think there's an obvious reason for that in our community with Issaquah Press not being here to serve the community anymore. But also, I think we were on that trend line for a while now. So, we saw significant decreases in the sources of information of local media, the Parks and Rec Quarterly Guide, Talking with Staff, and our local government cable channel. So, clearly, a shift to use of social media and online resources for information and that's helpful for us to understand. I told you that we ran a new report on demographic information. Remind you that the margin of error increases as we talk about the results here. I'm also going to speak very broadly about the results here. While there were differences in opinions, residents who earned less than $50,000 or who had lived in Issaquah for 20 years or more were less likely than other residents to give positive ratings. And broadly speaking, again, residents who were age 18 to 34 and who had lived in Issaquah for, or had lived in Issaquah for five years or less tended to give more positive ratings to aspects of mobility, natural environment, built environment, and community characteristics. These same people also tended to feel more positive about city leadership and governance than counterparts. Generally, residents who had lived in Issaquah for more than 20 years, were age 55 or more, or who had children in the home, were more likely than other respondents to indicate that they felt connected to their neighbors and their neighborhood. So, while, another, another thing that we look at is how results varied by the, the race that the respondent selected for the census purposes. And we found that more often, non-whites gave more favorable ratings and that was interesting to see this year. Geographically, this was the distribution of our sampling. Response rates in each area, as I said, ranged from 22 to 34%. Squawk in Old Town had the highest level of participation. I-90 Newport Tibbetts area and North Issaquah Providence Point had the lowest. And yet, responses were weighted to correlate with each area's percentage of our total population and again, the census demographics. So, NRC, you may have seen in the report, noted some variability in the ratings across geographic areas, but they were reluctant to kind of opine what those differences were. And they said that the reason for that was because you may have on one particular survey variable, very hi, the highest response in a geographic area, and then on the very next question, that same geographic area would have had the lowest. And so, those differences tended to cancel, cancel out. However, I was still interested in seeing if we could find any trends or information to glean from this. And so, I put together a kind of oversimplified way of looking at the geographic differences in responses to see if we could gather the general tone of residents. in responses to see if we could gather the general tone of residents or toner of residents in each of those areas. And so I looked at the number of times that each neighborhood had a tally mark in the column for having the highest score on that particular variable, or I put a tally mark where that neighborhood had the lowest score. So this chart totals up, if you, you look at the blue bar for Issaquah Highlands on the left there, they had the greatest number of positive responses throughout the survey. Conversely, they had the fewest number of lowest ratings in the survey. So my next steps are to continue to talk to departments about the results that are meaningful in the survey to them and use these results to inform our other planning efforts that we have going on. I made that pitch to you when I asked for funds for the survey, that not only does it help us with our benchmarking and performance measurement programs, but it also would help us to gather some information to then base our strategic planning effort or to help our parks planning effort. The other thing that I'll repeat is that I, in 2014, said it would be helpful for us to repeat this survey every two or three years. We'd like to continue to do that, so you won't hear a request from me next year on this. And the last point of interest for me is that NRC said that our results on the opt-in online survey were so similar to our scientific-
One dirty secret nobody likes to talk about.
Scientific, paper-based version. In future years, we should look at just combining those results and not keeping them separate. So what that tells me is that going forward, when we think about collecting data about the public's desires, we can trust our online results to be fairly accurate representations of public sentiment. So that's very good information for us to have as we think about future efforts to kind of poll the community.
Hola.
Can I ask you about something that you said earlier? You said something to the effect of being concerned with some of the scores related to governance. And I'm looking at the governance figure two, aspects of governance, and were, on all of them, were at least similar, if not higher, mostly similar, to the benchmark cities. But there aren't actually any where in that aspect where we're lower than our, than our benchmark cities. So what about that is particularly concerning?
So I'm not concerned about how we relate to the national and regional benchmarks. As I hope I said, we are similar. What's concerning to me is our trends over time on those measures. So we had lower scores in those areas in 2017 than we did in 2014. So Issaquah to Issaquah results. On about half of those variables. So we, we need to continue to look at that. Two years does not make a trend, but we should have some conversations around that and then continue to monitor it.
Can you, can you mention any where there, where there was the largest difference between the 2014 and 2016 numbers?
I can certainly do, I'm not sure if I can pick it out tonight, the largest difference over the two years, but I can, I can get you that information. You will be able to pick that out by looking at the Trends Report, which is the year-to-year comparison. What always makes it tricky is the governance variables show up in a lot of different categories. So I don't have a quick way of assessing the biggest difference by looking at this chart, but there are some that dropped enough to be significant, statistically significant, and that's what I would be concerned about. Couple of them were value of services for taxes paid, overall direction of the city, confidence in city government. So those are, those are a few to give you an idea.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And just at a glance, the change, there's not one that pops out. They had similar amounts of change.
It's very interesting that you said approximately half of them were lower than they were in 2014.
Yeah.
That is, I can see why that would be something to investigate. Thanks.
Sure.
Mariah?
Emily, I, wondering internally, with the administration and staff, are there work plans that sort of develop as a result of some of the survey information and things that can be worked on with the teams?
Absolutely. So our practice is to sit down with every department and talk about their results. So Parks Department is interested in certain variables on the survey. Those might be different than development services. And so we have conversations first to say, what do you see? Anything surprising? Why do you think we got the numbers that we did? And then, what are we doing now? What are, what are the reasons perhaps we got higher scores? What have we done? What have we changed? Do some assessment around that. And then where we have lower ones, do we have something in the works that we think we might be able to move the needle for next time? And I think the policy questions, the custom questions that we ask, we spend more time on those, incorporating those into work plans. So we had some around the Neighborhood Engagement Program. You'll see that data play out as we evaluate that program. And as we bring the Parks Plan forward, I would expect they use that, that data to help provide their priorities and their recommendations to you.
And it sounds good to take this information, like I say, to your departments and really get into the nitty-gritty of it. The couple of points that come to mind were that, in the overall trends, that we had 24 items decreasing and five increasing. So that's, that's like, that kind of caught me off a little bit. And the ones that, obviously, you know, people go traffic and those kinds of, those kinds of things in there, but that, that felt kind of off. You know, all the favorable ratings, but 24 items went down, only five went up. So that's an overall negative increase to me.
Yep.
I don't know how we can explain those numbers when overall, it looks like a positive increase.
Right, right. And I think, you know, the, it's important to look at it in a very detailed way. I have given you top level, just at a glance, what the numbers are saying, but when you factor in margin of error on each of those, it kind of shaves some of that away. And then, again, we have some differences in this year's dynamics, I will say, community-wise and nationally. So I'm, I'm not too fearful about that imbalance between the ones that decreased and the ones that increased. I think when we do this two years from now, we can see if that's really a trend or not. But it is just one way to talk about the data, the overall results.
I hope you get a lot of good work out of this with, as you implement.
Great.
I get some good ideas. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Being none, then we will now move to Good of the Order. Does anyone have anything for Good of the Order this evening at 10:40?
Clarify that, will you?
Seeing none, then there is no executive session. We are adjourned.